You guys have nine o'clock?
Okay, we're good.
You got our mics now, Commissioner Kapinski?
Okay, we'll call the county board meeting to order. Can we stand in front of the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Pop.
Okay, since Jared is out, I'll be acting as the chair today. Roll call, please, Ben.
Sure. Commissioner Shongin?
Here.
Commissioner Heinan?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Thank you.
One note is that all votes will be on roll call today because Commissioner Kapinski's not present. Approval or amend the agenda?
Yes, sir, we have these items for you. First is, would be consent item number six. Resolution authorizing sheriff's office to apply for crisis response command. Secondly, to place after Chris Bird County engineer, two items from auditor treasure. One is establishment county Benton County absentee and Uniform Overseas Citizens Absentee Voting Act. That'd be the first item under, again, that's after county engineer. And then secondly, for auditor treasure, auditor treasure update on tax forfeiture and DM. So again, those two items would fall right after county engineer at nine forty. Lastly, we'd like to add a final item for our plan and zoning director Roxanne Ackman, a nine-one-one address sign update. Again, that would be the final item at nine twenty-five for Roxanne Ackman, land service director.
Move for approval, excuse me, move for approval of the amended agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Most men made in second to approve the agenda. Roll call, Ben.
Commissioner Shongin?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Monty Headley to county administrator. Oh, open forum. Announcements from the board, board chair. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that your view can be heard. The county board deserves Robert's rules of order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public meetings, comments are generally reserved for open forum segments or public hearings. However, public comment on a, on other agendas items may be allowed at discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or turn them to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum?
We have no percent.
Nobody signed up for open forum, okay. The consent agenda. Move for approval, Mr. Chair, for items one through six.
Second.
Most men made the second. Roll call, Ben.
Commissioner Shongin?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Now we will head for Monty Headley's.
Mr. Chair, our first item is an update on the next era solar site, and I believe Adam is here with our update. And Roxanne will take care of the technology for us.
Hopefully.
Yeah, again, do you want to make sure just the folks at home?
Yep.
The presentation.
Commissioner Kapinski, can you see that? I don't, I'm guessing not.
No, I can't.
Yeah, I think the issue is when you, you know, the device is going to show it, the screen's going to show whatever device is running it, and it's not feeding into then the, the go-to, the go-to stream.
Oh.
Do I need to join?
Excuse me?
I wonder.
Do I need to join the go-to stream and then share my screen?
So, um, the, the, the other solution is, um, is have it on a flash drive and, and plug, plug into that computer that's on that podium, right?
I can just follow along too. I'll just pay a little closer attention on the, on who's talking. That's fine.
Is that okay, or?
Yeah, I, Jared, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, go ahead and plug in.
Good offer to share remotely. This is Michael with Next Era, and I could just try to keep along with the same cadence. So I can share my screen. See if that works.
Can you, could you make the gentleman that just spoke, the, the presenter, and then he could share his screen?
And then I don't mind.
So we're gonna unplug. We'll get there. We'll get there. So Roxanne will make him the presenter, and then he can share screen. And I'm sorry, who was that that spoke? Could you, tell us, could you introduce yourself?
It was Michael George.
Michael George.
Yeah, yeah, this is Michael George, and I'm in the battery energy storage and engineering group here at Next Era.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Michael, you should have the ability to share your screen.
Okay. I will do so now, one second.
So then once you plug in, maybe if you just say next, then he'll know that you're...
Yep.
Oh, I should...
Yeah, he's gonna share for...
And then you're not gonna do yours.
I'm not gonna do any.
Okay. We've got it.
Yeah, he's gonna run the show.
Okay.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Thanks, Michael. All right. Morning, everyone. My name is Adam Garcia. I'm senior project manager with Next Era Energy Resources. I'm the lead developer for the Benton Solar Project. The, the goal of this presentation today is to kind of give everyone a brief overview of the battery storage system and answer any questions that you may have. I introduced this back in April when I gave a project update then, and really want to take this time to go a little bit more in-depth into what a battery storage system looks like, kind of what it does and why we are looking to add it to the, to the solar project. With me today is Michael George, as he already introduced himself, and then Evan Shea is on the call as well. He's on our battery storage team, our development team at Next Era, so he's joining virtually today. Next slide, please, Michael.
Yeah, it's got some latency issues. Show the next slide on, on my side. But I don't think you're seeing it on yours.
There we go.
Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
All right, so, um, overall, there's, there's not a, not a huge update on the solar project itself, so we're still, you know, aiming for a hundred megawatts of, um, hundred megawatt solar project interconnecting to the Benton one fifteen KV substation. Our targeted application date is August nineteenth of this year, so coming up. At that point, the application will be public. It'll be on the Minnesota PUC docket, and then it will go through a series of, of public meetings where we'll, you know, be able to get public input from, from the community and kind of address any, any concerns at the, at the state level as well. Like I mentioned, the, the bigger update that I wanted to share with you all is the one hundred megawatt battery, battery storage system that we are intending to permit with the solar site. So this will be located just north of the collector's substation. I'll show it on a map in a few slides. And we're, this is relatively new development. It's been in the last six months or so. So when we, we talked in April, that was kind of the first time we were integrating it into our plans. It is largely based on commercial demand, so a lot of the off-takers that we're talking to have an interest in having a storage component with their renewable assets, whether that's wind or solar. So that's kind of the genesis of why we're including it in our plans. And, uh, yeah, the, the timeline for construction and commercial operation will be in parallel with the solar project. So it'll be one big construction project that includes both the battery and the storage, and the, and the solar project. So that is still targeted for the end of the year twenty twenty-seven, and construction will begin in the spring of twenty twenty-six. Next slide, please, Michael.
Let me know when it, when it switches.
Yep, and that's just the, the current project timeline, so no major updates there. Next slide, please. So this is a, a map showing kind of everything that, that is going on in the county, in the county from Next Era's perspective. Pink boundary there is the Benton one, so that's the, the project we're talking about today. The blue boundary is the, the phase two of the project, so that would be our project that's aiming to, uh, go operational in twenty twenty-eight. Goal wasn't to go too deep into that phase of the project. Don't have any major updates. Just want to show, show you all a map, kind of showing where, where everything is going to be. Uh, and then the green is where we intend to put the battery storage facility, and we're gonna zoom in a little bit on the next slide. All right, so, um, again, here's the, kind of a zoomed-in version. The collector's substation is on the very south part of that picture on the right. So the closer the battery is to the collector's substation, the better. That's kind of what influenced our decision to put it there. Like I said, we haven't, we're not in our final engineering design for the battery yet, so it could move. However, it will be, you know, somewhere within that parcel in the middle of the solar facility. So it'll be a hundred megawatt four-hour energy storage project, so that's about enough energy to, to power approximately eighty thousand homes for four hours at its max discharge rate. Again, it'll be kind of in parallel with the solar farm in terms of construction and operation. And then on top of the, the solar field's two hundred million dollar capital investment, it's an additional, about sixty-five million capital investment in the, for the project. All right, and these are, so the next couple of slides are not necessarily specific to this project. They're kind of what our, our battery storage projects look like as a whole, kind of across the board. So, um, you know, one of the biggest questions we get is, you know, why are we adding battery storage? I mentioned there's commercial interest, and there's a few technical reasons, which are what those first three bullets are about. I want to focus more on the, the last one, how it extends the hours a renewable energy project can operate. So, um, you know, one of the biggest benefits for the battery storage system is that when energy demand is low, the battery can serve as a load. When energy demand is high, the battery can serve as a source. So it can be char, if the, the sun is shining but energy demand is low, we can charge the battery instead of, you know, not really having anywhere to send that power to. And then when energy demand is high, but, you know, the sun's down, we can discharge the battery to still provide that renewable energy to the grid. Next slide, please. All right, so this is kind of a modular breakdown of, of how the batteries are constructed. So it starts with individual battery cells. These are typically lithium ion. They are then collected into modules, and then their, the modules are stacked vertically in battery racks, and the battery racks are in the battery container. Every container has its own thermal management system, so to keep the temperature from getting too hot or too cold. And, and then that last bullet, yeah, it could either be with renewable energy asset like we're looking at here, and we also have some standalone storage projects. We have a fifteen megawatt battery that's operating in Minnesota right now. It's called Go For Storage in, um, Anoka County. Is pronounced that right? Um, so, I believe that's not too far from here. Next slide, please. And again, this is more about, this slide kind of goes a little more in detail of, you know, why we want to add battery storage, what it, what it can do. Like I said, it, it, the, the primary purpose is when energy demand is low, it can act as a load. When energy demand is high, it can act as a source. They are long-term investments, right, so we expect the battery storage facility to operate on the same timeline as the batter, as the solar project. So the, you know, twenty-five-year, twenty, twenty-five-year life of the battery kind of goes in line with the twenty-five to thirty-year life of the solar project. Next slide, please. Yep, so safety is our top priority when we're developing and constructing and operating these projects. And that kind of starts from, from day one with these pro, with these projects. So, um, for all of the equipment that we get, it goes through some pretty vigorous industry testing and certification. So we need to basically certify all of the material that we're going to use in the battery before it even gets to the site, before we even begin, begin construction. Every container has fire protection and control systems that comply with the National Fire Protection Association. So we have to certify that, you know, we meet those standards and continue to meet those standards over the life of the project. I talked a little bit about temperature management already. We also have detection, so sensors that will basically raise, raise an alarm or notify our operators if an abnormal condition is arising within the battery. On the next slide, I'll kind of show, you know, how we're monitoring those. And then lastly, I think is, is one of the most important ones, so that's engaging first responders. So making sure that the communities that we're putting these projects in understand, you know, the technology that's coming in and how to, to respond in, uh, in the unlikely event of an emergency. So I'll go, the last slide I have today is kind of how we're going to do that engagement and what our path forward is there. So I mentioned we have remote monitoring, so, you know, every battery container can tell and, uh, module can detect abnormal conditions. So we have a remote operations control center called The Rock down in Florida. We actually have two different facilities, one for redundancy, that monitors every renewable project that we have twenty-four seven. So it's essentially like a watch floor, and any abnormal conditions arise, they can remotely shut down an asset from there. So that's one of our, you know, our first lines of defense here after all the testing and certifications is having that twenty-four seven remote capability, monitoring capability. Right, so I mentioned the, the engagement with the, the local stakeholders is one of the most important aspects of our development here. So to do that, we conduct training sessions with local first responders, so sheriffs department, fire departments, make sure they understand, again, the technology that, that we are hoping to develop here and make sure that everyone's prepared to, to manage a response if needed. We do a first responder orientation at all of the new storage facilities, and then annual refreshers on any details of, you know, facility safety, fire protection system, and, you know, any, you know, new technologies or changes in policy that have, that have come out. So I've, I reached out to, to Kristen at the emergency management, the Benton County Emergency Management Office, trying to set that up this week. Unfortunately, I couldn't, couldn't make that work, but that's our, our next step is to engage with her to set up these first orientations to make sure that we address the, the concerns on the emergency management side, to make sure that we have buy-in there as well. Yeah, and that's, that's all I had for kind of the overview. There's my contact information here. Again, please, I'm available over call, text, or email if, if there are any other questions or concerns that come up that you don't have right here. But with that, I'd like to, to turn it to, um, kind of open it up for questions if you have any. Uh, I can answer a lot of the, you know, development style questions, but I have Michael and Evan on here for, if anything gets a little too technical that...
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I could, Adam, thank you for coming today. Appreciate the update. Couple of questions. I just wanted to verify your original map. At the beginning, still showed no panels north of county fifty.
Correct.
Phase two.
Correct.
Okay. How about additional heavy equipment needed to bring in these containers or battery packs? Any, I mean, that would be above and beyond what the solar panels would be.
Correct. Um, I'm, I'm not sure, so I, I don't know if it would be any, you know, larger equipment needed for this.
Okay.
Michael, I don't know if you have any, anything else to add, but again, this would be kind of in, um, it'd be coordinated with the solar construction and the solar haul routes that, you know, I've talked about before. So it wouldn't be an additional route needed necessarily.
And also, do you have an idea about how many containers at this point?
Um, approximately a hundred containers in a, the, the lay-down yard in green there is ten acres. The actual footprint would be less than five.
All right. And then how about, where does the power come from to operate those containers, temp, temperature management? I mean, is that coming off panels? Is it coming off the grid?
Uh, no, we have an auxiliary power system to...
That takes care of all the temperature management?
Right.
Okay.
So that it's not dependent on the operation of the battery to, it's not a...
Yeah, right.
Sounds like a bad design.
Awesome. And then just the last comment, if you could please email this presentation to us, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? I guess, so if this, is this like a trial in, in phase two, you'll use the same, uh, technology? Or is that, you don't know that yet?
We don't know that yet. I mean, it's, like, like I said, it's kind of a, industry-wide, it's been a trend to add storage to renewable projects. You know, with, with the second phase of the project, we may be a little bit more constrained on space. Like I said, it's more, it's more efficient to have it close to the substation. The second project is going to the same collector's substation, so it would have to kind of be within the footprint of the first project if, or just outside of it, near the substation if we were to add. So, um, something we're, we're kind of looking into right now, but we're still very early on in that, in that regard.
Anything else? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your property, for your stuff, you're gonna use the, you're gonna share screen too, right?
Yes.
Could you make sure like the, the video images are put, are shown, so whatever's on the screen is as big as possible?
Sure.
All right. I believe the person is a DC fly-in.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I probably would like to request some additional time to talk about dates, so I, I guess I'd like to move to table this into our next meeting and make a decision then.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, how much time do we have for this? I mean, we've got plenty of time.
I think so. At this point, it would be the first meeting in August, though, before we would decide. That still gives us months, six weeks.
Sure. So we'll plan on the first meeting in August for some decisions then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you second? I'm sorry.
Yes.
So that... Sure, I think it's probably good to have some lead time in terms of, you know, airfare and hotels and all those logistics that need to occur, so, okay. We'll bring it back then, first meeting in August. So we got a motion and a second to table this.
Commissioner Shongin?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Okay, the July twenty-second meeting of township, cities, and counties?
Mr. Chair, I, I wanted to share with you a draft agenda for your, your review and discussion. You'll see that's with your agenda items. That's Monday night, six-thirty at St. Georgetown Hall. At the last joint meeting up at Wata Township, there was a discussion about inviting someone who could, who could address this group about grant opportunities. So I've connected with Carl Newbanks from Initiative Foundation, and he's going to talk about some opportunities for disaster preparedness and response funding. And I think that would be a topic of interest to virtually everyone, there are cities, townships, and the counties. So Carl has graciously agreed to join us for the, the meeting on Monday night. Roxanne would like to do an update on the cannabis registration process and hopefully get some feedback from cities and towns on where they stand on this issue. So again, another great topic. Amanda will do a BEP update for you. It's always great to have Amanda there. And then Kristen also would like to do the emergency management update. And then just generally, time for updates from cities, townships, and other, other updates from the county. I know Commissioner Kapinski mentioned talking about the Government Center project, so that could fall within that, that, um, that agenda item. So wanted to, to, to see if this agenda looks okay to you all? Any, any changes at this point that you'd like to see?
Any, anybody want anything added or more lengthy discussions?
I think we're good.
Looks good.
I think we're fine.
Great.
Monty, is there a discussion on true county? The county assessment?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's number, it's number eight.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, number eight. Thanks, Roxanne.
Just making sure.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, you mentioned it. Right, there was discussion, having Brian there talk about this true county concept.
Right.
I'm not sure, this is kind of a long agenda. You might be there pretty late.
Oh, we'll make it quick.
All right, if I can move on, um, just, my final item is the culture team. So this is one of four areas of focus for our employee engagement project was, was the creation of what's known as a culture team. And, uh, as you may recall from Andy Zenney's discussion, this is a group of non-supervised employees you bring together to discuss ideas and initiatives to address our culture. And I, and I, and I've said this before, is I don't necessarily have specific examples for what this group might look at, and I don't want to create any biases or preconceived notions about what they should look at. To me, they start with a blank slate, and they come up with ideas on their own. And I have this agenda item here, Mr. Chair, because I wanted to acknowledge and thank and appreciate these individuals who volunteered to be part of this culture team. I, again, I admire their willingness to step up and be a part of helping making Benton County a better place. And if I can, Mr. Chair, I, I wish to read their names and acknowledge, again, their participation. We have Brent Marchik, uh, Beth Stay, Amanda Warner, Amber Wyrock. I'm sorry, did I say it okay? Oh, I got it! Christina Whiting, Leah Carroll, Jason Gross, Will Chu, Hannah Fisher, John Lee, Brianna Long, Sarah Rochebauer.
Yeah.
I'm close? Oh, thanks. Jeff Ball, Lisa Anderson, Dusty Feder, Mariah Klein, Mallory Voight, Catherine Dusine, Sean Gitch, Michelle Retka, and Dawn Riggs. Again, I want to definitely acknowledge these folks and thank them for their willingness to participate. And Mr. Chair, just one last thought. I, I stress this with our departments. We absolutely must allow these folks the time away from work to participate and make sure they understand that they have the permission and the time away from their normal duties to be a part of this group. They've got three scheduled meetings right now. The first is August seventh. There's a second one in August, and I believe the third one is, is September tenth. But most likely, they'll meet monthly for the foreseeable future. And they're definitely going to need to understand that, you know, hey, folks, we, we're behind you. You have the time and permission to be a part of this group. Now, sure, over time, the membership will probably change. As, as some folks need to come and go, that's okay. But this is our first group that gets this process started, so just want to make sure I mention them, Mr. Chair.
Yep, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This time we'll go to Roxanne.
Is that the way you wanted it?
Exactly. That's what we're looking for. You have the biggest possible image.
Okay.
But they, folks at home, these little.
Alright, okay, so to begin with item number one, the consideration of the final plat entitled Mortenson Edition by Jeff and Tammy Mortenson. Um, this one could have been placed on the consent agenda, but I didn't have action by the Planning Commission, uh, until Thursday evening. This is a two-lot plat. It is not actually creating any new lots. It's the combination of three lots into two lots. There are existing dwellings on the lots. And this was really just to make, um, the southern lot larger. Um, the, the property owner owns all three lots, so Jeff and Tammy Mortenson own all three lots and, um, due to the passing of a family member. And so they're just using this opportunity to make them more conforming. Um, so the Planning Commission did review this on Thursday night, and they did recommend approval. No public hearing needed.
No public hearing needed at all?
Nope, just action.
Okay.
Mister Chair, it's pretty straightforward. As Roxanne said, Planning Commission did approve this to come to the County Board today, so with that, I'll move, uh, for approval, the final plat of Mortenson Edition. Authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
I have a little bit of discussion.
Okay.
Um, it says that there's, it, it looks like that red line goes through a, a building or something? Is that?
Yes, they will be moving structures to make sure that they're, uh, in compliance with the required setbacks.
So they'll have to change some things to have it?
Yes, they'll be moving that structure.
Is that all that's going to need to be moved, or?
Yes, they just have one, um, shed, and it's actually in this location that's being moved. Um, this, I believe, may be an RV or something. It's not, uh, it's not a structure.
So in the, they'll fit the setbacks, or?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
I have nothing else, that was my question.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second. Roll call, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Shlongin.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Item number two.
Okay. This is the plat of Archibald Acres. This is a major subdivision. We have not seen a major subdivision in Benton County since, I, I want to say around two thousand and eight. Um, so this is a welcome, uh, welcome addition to the county. It is just on the outskirts, just to the north of the city limits of Sartell. Um, but it would be in the township of Sock Rapids. Um, it's a thirteen-lot plat. As you can see, it is zoned for R-three single-family residential. Those are, um, smaller lots. The required lot size is twenty-one thousand square feet. Uh, but this plat actually is providing for larger lots. They're about, uh, point eight of an acre to about two-point-six acres. Um, the larger lots on the southern portion are a bit larger. Each lot does have a, their own septic system. Uh, we did remove that requirement to have a community septic system if the lots can support, um, their own septic systems. And I think that just works out better in the long run, um, unless there is that, um, uh, uh, ability to connect to city services. In this particular case, we did have a number of conversations with the city of Sartell to make sure that there was no intention or desire to annex this property, and there is not. Um, there is, you can sort of see it on the, uh, draw, on the plat drawing here, there is a creek that runs through on the southern side of the property. Uh, that does make it very financially expensive to extend, um, any of their utilities to that area. And so at this time, there is no desire, um, or ability to extend those utilities. Um, I know there was discussions on whether this was part of an orderly annexation agreement area. Um, from the documentation that I have, and I believe I provided it in your packet, um, there is an area that is outlined in yellow. That was the orderly annexation agreement area, and it specifically excludes Thousand Oaks, which is, um, uh, you can sort of see it on the drawing here, but Thousand Oaks may have extended south at one point. The plan was to do that. It did not. And so now we have Archibald Acres. Um, but that was specifically excluded as part of that orderly annexation agreement. Furthermore, there was no action taken and no movement forward on that orderly annexation agreement. And so the county has remained in control of that area, uh, as far as, uh, zoning jurisdiction. So at this time, they will be, um, constructing Seventeenth and, uh, an extension of Sixteenth and Seventeenth Avenue Northwest. And then, um, it's sort of a loop-type road, and there'll be Forty-third Street, I believe it's northwest. Um, so this will be, uh, if you're familiar with the area, it is very heavily treed, and so it should be, um, very relatively nice, nice-sized lots, a nice area for future development. It is consistent with our comprehensive plan, um, in providing for, um, additional housing in areas that are adjacent to our cities. I, and I should mention as well, there is a development agreement with the township, because this will be, um, this will be township roads. And so the agreement is with the township for the development of these roads, and then the future maintenance of the roads, and the stormwater, um, maintenance as well.
Okay, so we'll be conducting a public hearing on the plat?
Yes.
And we've already heard from staff on this. Um, if the applicant is present, or representative is here, would you please come to the podium, give your name and address, and tell us why you're seeking this?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Jesse Arnt. Um, address is eighty-five sixty-two Oak Hill Road Northeast in Rice. Um, and this is, yeah, uh, Roxanne went over most of it, I think, uh, here, but, uh, this has been a project that's been on, it's been going for, um, a couple of years now. Um, slow process. I'm a first-time developer, so admittedly trying to do this, uh, not putting cart before horse type of a thing, and, and kind of do, kind of taking the long, slow path, but the safer path, if you will, so. Um, we have, we're to a point here now where everything is checked, uh, off. We've done, uh, soil borings. Um, it's a great piece of property. Um, the neighborhood out there is kind of already filled with bigger, more outside of, I mean, it's a, it's, it's in, in the township, so it kind of has a township by bigger, uh, lots. Uh, man, in keeping with that, um, kind of motif, if you will, uh, that was the design of Archibald Acres, was to have, you know, thirteen lots, not trying to cram too many smaller lots of that area. Bigger lots, more trees kept, um, just a gorgeous piece of property that I want other families to enjoy.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to, um, to address the County Board on this item? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Anybody that wants to come before the County Board?
Or else online.
Or online, yes. Thank you. Hearing or seeing nobody? Final call for anybody wishing to address the County Board before, for public testimony? Alright, final call, and seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Are there any emails, letters, other communications to be read into record?
No.
Has the department received any comments, concerns from state agencies, cities, townships on this agenda item?
No, the township has acted on the developers' agreement and the, uh, stormwater maintenance agreement. And, um, the city has let us know that this is not, um, in their future for annexation.
Okay, so you addressed the, the affected townships was, and there was action taken?
Yes.
Okay. The County Board will now have time for questions of staff and discussion. As a reminder to the audience, the public hearing portion is now closed. Are there any questions from the County Board members on this action item?
Mister Chair, as Roxanne said and Jesse said, this has been an ongoing plat, and we've seen him a handful of times at Planning Commission, and so, um, I thank you for the effort you put forward in this and, and checking those boxes off. I know that took some time. Appreciate your work with staff on that, so, um, that's the only comment I have.
Yep, and once you, you know, dot all the i's and cross the t's, it makes it easier.
We're ready to go.
Right.
With that, Mister Chair, I will move for approval of the final plat of Archibald Acres and authorize the Chair to sign the plat.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the plat. Is there any comments from the County Board? Roll call, Beth?
Commissioner Shlongin.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Motion's approved, plat's approved. Great work, Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse.
Good luck.
Yeah, yeah, good luck. Now we got a public hearing. Public hearing on Consider Ordinance Number Four ninety-four, considering an interim ordinance authorizes a study and imposing of a moratorium on the operation of cannabis.
Okay, uh, so the, the staff would like to consider, um, Ordinance Four ninety-four, which would establish, um, an interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the operation of cannabis businesses. Um, the reason for this is to allow the county time to develop appropriate ordinances and an, an appropriate registration process. Um, the state has moved up the process for certain cannabis businesses, uh, for social equity applicants. And so they are currently reviewing applications with the intent to issue, um, temporary licenses for certain businesses. Uh, that puts many counties, cities, townships in a predicament, because we do not have established reg- regulations for registration or for zoning. And so it's, uh, important for us to per, take that time that we do have, um, the few months, the about five months that we do have to establish these ordinances. Um, Four ninety-four would, um, be effective in townships, um, and other areas under the county's zoning jurisdiction. Um, so it would be in all of our townships except for those areas that are in orderly annexation agreements, because we do not have zoning, uh, jurisdiction in those areas. Um, and it would be effective in cities within Benton County that have consented to the county registering on their behalf. At this time, we do not have joint power agreements with any cities or townships, but we are working on that. And I'll get into that in a little more detail, um, when I give a cannabis committee update. Um, who is affected by this? All cannabis businesses as defined in statute, section three forty-two oh one. Um, what is affected is zoning and registration. So if we don't list those uses as an allowed use, whether it's, uh, permitted, conditional, interim, um, it's not permitted. So for the time being, none of those would be permitted. Um, it's then the same with registration. We do not have a process for registration, so, um, therefore this ordinance, uh, allows us to not take those businesses in for registration. Uh, how long? Statute allows us to place this moratorium in place, um, until January first, twenty twenty-five. That's statutorily, um, the date. We cannot go beyond that date. Um, generally speaking, a moratorium is allowed for up to one year, but because it's statutorily limited to that time, that's the extent. Um, and then the potential gaps are those orderly annexation, uh, agreements, or those orderly annexation areas. So Minden, Sock Rapids, uh, Gilman, those are the areas that it's unclear if we have that ability to place a moratorium over those areas. Uh, for example, Saint Cloud's moratorium that they put in place last year, si- strictly stated within the city limits of Saint Cloud, it did not extend to where they have jo- zoning jurisdiction in Minden Township. So that provides for a gap, unless we get that, uh, joint powers agreement signed relatively quickly before the end of the year, um, then we would have that registration component, which would ma- restrict them from, um, locating in that area. So it's kind of a, it's, it's touchy. There's gray areas, but we're doing what we can.
Chair, Roxanne, just for clarification, so on those orderly annexation areas, like, for example, Foley's.
Sure.
So that includes Gilmanton Township. So that, uh, board isn't the right word, that group of, between Gilmanton and Foley officials, is that who the agreement would have to be with in addition to the city?
No. So the cities don't have the ability to register outside of city limits, the, the businesses. They can, um, work, they can do the zoning. They can have jurisdiction over zoning, but not the registering of the businesses. So it's, it's, yeah, it's very complicated. There's lots of layers. Um, so let's say Foley chooses to adopt a moratorium, they should include, um, their, the areas in which they have zoning jurisdiction, which would be that Gilman, uh, that area in Gilman that's under the orderly annexation. That would restrict zoning, not registration, but at least the zoning would preclude those businesses from locating there.
Okay.
Layers.
Yeah, yeah.
Cluster.
Yeah.
It's a cluster. So the city of, I'm sorry, Mister Chair, so City Sock Rapids would have to do the same thing then?
Correct.
And do you know if they are going to do that or not?
A moratorium?
Yeah.
I have not been privy to any of that as far as a moratorium. Uh, but I do know that they are considering, um, working with us on a joint powers agreement for registration.
Okay.
Okay. So, there is no applicant, so we will now open the public hearing, if you're okay with that, Roxanne?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the County Board on the agenda item? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Anybody online? Final call for anyone wishing to address the County Board? So seeing nobody on, that is, on the final call, the hearing, public hearing is now closed. Is there any emails, letters, other communications to be read?
No.
Has, has the department received any comments from state agencies, cities, or townships on the agenda?
Not on this particular item, no.
Okay. The County Board will now have time for staff and discussion. As a reminder to the audience, the public hearing is now closed.
Mister Chair.
Sure.
I know other counties have, uh, adopted a moratorium on this too because of the timeframe.
Yeah. We hear it all the time. Anything else? Any other comments?
Mister Chair, I'm going to move for approval of the, um, establishing the interim ordinance, uh, moratorium as presented, please.
I'll second, go ahead. Kapinski, we'll get the second from Kapinski. Any other questions or comments? Do you have some? Okay. Roll call, Beth?
Commissioner Shlongin.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Okay, next item, Roxanne.
Alright, uh, brief update on our cannabis committee that we're affectionately calling it. Um, this is representatives from the Sheriff's Office, Public Health, the Attorney's Office, Auditoría, Treasure Office, and Land Services. We met on July first to go over what exactly we need to begin doing and have adopted by the end of the year. Um, and so first item was getting that cannabis business moratorium in place, uh, which, which we've got now. Um, the next is the joint powers agreement with cities and towns. So I have successfully touched base with every township, and they are all in agreement that they would like to move forward with the joint powers agreement allowing for the county to register businesses on their behalf. Um, the next step would be the signing of that joint powers agreement. Uh, Michelle has drafted that joint powers agreement, um, and I have sent that out as a draft copy to each of the townships. Um, we do want to touch base on that on July twenty-second with the townships, just to make sure there's an understanding, because I think there is a lack of information being provided to these townships on what their responsibilities and roles are, and what it actually means for the county to take over, um, the, the registration process. Um, as a, just as a reminder for everyone, uh, statute states that counties can only take on that responsibility if provided consent by cities and townships. So it's not that the county can do that because they want to, um, but we're doing it more out of, um, the need and the necessity to provide that service to areas that don't have, um, the ability to do the compliance checks, to create a registration process. Um, so financially, as, as far as, and as well as, um, the staff needed to do that, um, we're hoping to help out the, the townships. Um, we do have, uh, a number of cities as well that have stated their interest. We've got Sock Rapids, um, Rice, Gilman, and Foley all have indicated that there is interest in having the county, um, provide that, uh, for the registration process. I know some of them want to see what comes out of our comprehensive. I know some of them want to see what comes out of our comprehensive cannabis ordinance before they sign a joint powers agreement. Um, and within that comprehensive ordinance will establish things such as a registration cap. What will that look like? And will there be a registration cap? Um, time, place, and manner, um the hours of operation, distances from schools, uh playgrounds, um places of public accommodation, um and then we have to create a registration process. Um, and I'm thinking that we will likely follow something similar to the tobacco ordinance as far as um who sees those applications, who does the compliance checks, um things like that. So we've got a ways to go. Um, fortunately, the state did issue a um comprehensive cannabis ordinance for us to look at uh a template, so to say. Um, there will be some significant changes to that because it's not, you know, one size fits all. Uh, but we're hoping to get working on that and bring that to the county board um as soon as we possibly can. Um, anybody else? I know Michelle's online, Jaclyn's here if anybody else. Uh, Troy's online. Everybody was part of that committee if there was any other comments that I may have missed for the board.
Mister Chair, Roxanne and Michelle, not sure who this question's for, but uh will the joint power agreements with the townships all be basically the same? Or are they gonna, you're gonna have to go into specific detail for each township?
The idea is that we would just place the n- the township name on each one. That's the only difference that there would be.
Alright.
And our goal, oh, sorry. Our goal is for that it is uniform for all of the townships, which is why I think it's important to have that discussion on July twenty-second.
Sure, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a, um Roxanne, do you have a timeframe when you want all these joint powers agreements in place?
The sooner the better because we don't have registration, we don't have that consent to register on their behalf. Um, so it, let's say, um, a retail business comes in and wants to register that was approved through that social equity application, um they potentially would be looking at the township for that. So if if we don't have that agreement, they're on the hook and not the county.
So and I, I I mean, we'll have to send, you're gonna send a letter explaining some of that stuff to the townships 'cause you know, we always know not not all townships are gonna show up on the twenty-second.
Yes, I sent one to every single supervisor and clerk so that everybody got it. Um, we let them know that we will be at the July twenty-second meeting. Um, our hope is after that July twenty-second meeting, we'll have a final draft of the joint powers. And then I will send that out to townships and let them know if they want me to attend the meeting, um or if they wanna meet with me, we certainly can do that. Um, I think what'll be important is those cities and townships that have orderly annexation agreements. Those are gonna be the ones that are crucial in getting um the agreements back to us. Sooner.
Right. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Can you add a last item? Nope, we got a couple more.
Oh, gosh, I'm not done. Um, so the next item is the uh request to authorize land services to hire additional staff uh or additional staff appraiser for the assessor's office. We talked about this at the committee of the whole uh last week, I believe it was. Um, we have uh a local assessor that is no longer working in this area. And so we have a number of townships that now have contracted, which were approved today. Uh, Minden and Granite Ledge Township both have agreed to um the county providing for the assessing services. Uh, with that addition, we have to by statute take on that ability. And so we're in need of an additional staff appraiser. Um, you will see that I've got a hundred and two dollars and three hundred and forty a hundred and two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars listed as the cost estimate. That's for a full year. Um, if we get somebody on board for five months, meaning we're looking at taking them on, I mean, bringing them on ASAP, it's uh forty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then on top of that, five thousand to get a desk set up, um and the computer and everything that would be necessary to provide this person um a a proper working uh space. So it comes to forty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars as the total. Um, and then I'll be working with Monte to get this uh position added uh for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, any questions on that? Um, and we have space for this individual?
It's the last one, so we gotta it's the last desk in the recorder uh assessor area before we start using closets.
Anything else?
No. Make a motion to authorize the land service department to hire additional staff appraiser.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. To hire an additional staff appraiser? Any other discussion, any other questions? Hearing none, Beth.
Commissioner Shlongin.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye. Once again, Roxanne.
Alright, um, so the next one is review of the tri-county solid waste management commission twenty twenty-five draft budget. Um, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Pop, you may be aware that uh with the changeover and staff over there, some of the, some new things came to light. One of which is that the budget for the tri-county solid waste management commission is supposed to be presented to the board annually. Um, this is uh that opportunity for this year or for twenty twenty-five, they're presenting this. Um, we've got um thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. That is the estimated cost for the tri- to the tri-county uh solid waste management commission. Um, eight, roughly nine thousand will come from score funds and roughly twenty-seven thousand will come from solid waste. And this is actually a reduction in cost from past years um due to um the new tri- county solid waste coordinator make going through um kinda combing the budget and taking out some of the items that maybe were there that didn't need to be there, um and then removing um I apologize, there was something else removed from um, I think it was the compost bins and compost pilot program grant match, which was uh twenty thousand dollars that's been removed from the budget.
Okay, comments?
Uh, Mister Chair, this is Roxanne said tri-county will see this uh for their approval in August, the August twenty-second meeting.
Okay. So we need a motion?
No.
No.
Informational, informational.
Okay.
Yes.
Nine-one-one sign.
Okay, so it was brought to my attention that there are a number of nine-one-one address signs that are missing which creates issues for our sheriff's department um mainly. Uh, this is often noticed by our sheriff's department and highway department that these signs are missing, not necessarily by our staff. Um, we do issue the signs um when somebody is um constructing a primary structure on their lot. But for a simple lot split, an address sign would not be required. Um, to kinda back that up, uh Benton County adopted ordinance three thirty-nine in two thousand and two which requires that all properties with a primary structure have a nine-one-one address um assigned and installed on their property. At that time, the county went through and um issued a sign and installed it and then assessed that cost back to each individual property owner. Um, it is a cost that the property owners responsible for, even if that's uh sign was lost, damaged, destroyed. Um, if it, even if it was not at their expense, they're responsible to us for that. If they wanna seek reimbursement, it would be up to them to seek that reimbursement. I'm sure Chris has had one or two that have had to be replaced. And so, um, but otherwise, yeah, if somebody drives into that post and it, you know, this roads were slippery, it would be a responsibility of the property owner to replace it and try to seek reimbursement um from the individual who who took out the sign. Um, if we want to move forward in trying to get these signs put back up, we certainly can. It will be it could be very time consuming. Um, staff doesn't have the ability to canvas the entire county for those unincorporated areas. But if we are sent um that information when it's noticed, um we can certainly address that, letting the property owner know that they have thirty days to um request a sign and have it installed. Um, the county can install it. There is a fifty dollar charge for the county to install that. We would have to send a staff person out there who would uh mark the location using GPS, mark it with uh white paint. They have to call go for one, wait a day or two, then go back out to actually install the sign uh with the uh uh the post um, the post pounder that they use to install that. So there is a time commitment in in installing all of those signs. Um, we do get a number of individuals who either do not want a sign because there's a cost to it or think that somebody else should be paying for it, so they're simply just not going to install that sign. Um, we do have the ordinance, as I stated, that uh it is a required uh component of all primary structures.
Mister Chair.
Yes. Go ahead, Jared.
Um, yes, uh uh Mark Abnett brought this issue up to me uh last week. And there and thus I I contacted Monte on it. It it is very important when it comes to emergency management when our uh officers are trying to get out to a nine-one-one call. Uh, I just, I look at the fifty dollars that uh that we charge. Uh, how, man, that seems pretty cheap for doing, going out a couple times to a to a site.
Yeah, I'd agree. Um, Roxanne, well, if you apply for a building permit or whatever, I mean, it's it's up to the 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 builder or the construction person to have that sign up, I understand, right?
Yes, it's the property owner's responsibility.
The property owners or the the person that's doing the building?
It's the property owners.
Property owners, okay, because I was going back to when my son built the chicken bar. They were adamant that that sign be up there prior to starting the construction.
A lot of times the builders want that sign up there.
Case of an emergency, right?
No. More so because they need, yes, they need all of their subcontractors to know where they're going. So a lot of people request them early on.
Yeah.
Mister, Mister, can I ask Roxanne a question? So with uh the initial sign for a new uh lot with the structure on it, who installs it? Us or somebody else?
It's up to, they can install it or they can request that we install it. There's that fifty dollar charge if they want.
It's optional, like, it doesn't have to be us then.
Correct.
Okay, and same with replacement. It could be us, but it could be them. Okay.
Yep.
Got it, thanks.
Yep.
Do.
Go ahead.
Mister Chair, uh Chris, snowplow takes it out. Still on them because it's damaged? I mean, that that must happen.
Yeah, I'd say it'd be naive for me to say it never happens. It depends on where the location was. I mean, if it was on the mailbox post, and our policy says if you have a swingaway post and we hit it with our plow, we'll replace that and anything, you know, that was attached to it. Um, so that may include that.
Depends, but so if you do damage it, we potentially could replace that.
I will say anything that we damage and we can prove that we damage it, we'll replace it, yeah.
I just wanted to verify that, thank you.
So another question I have is, um, just vacant lots, do the, do they require one or no?
No. No, mo- a lot of people do want one.
Right.
So you will see them a lot out on vacant lots, but um they're not required unless there's a primary structure.
And then, and it's probably easier to collect or for them to to get the sign and install it or have us install it.
Yep, yep, and.
Just because they want it and not because it's required.
Right. Yep, so it's it's generally it's the older properties. It's not new construction. I would say m- mostly it's the older properties that, you know, maybe they've got it on their mailbox or something, or they simply just don't want to have that identification. Um, I, and they may not understand that it's for nine-one-one purposes.
Right. That was just informational?
Do you think that the the question is, is, you know, I think Roxanne had mentioned earlier, she doesn't have the staff resources to systematically canvass the county to discover missing ones. So uh my thought was, well, the sheriff's office, highway department, they're out there on the road all the time. Perhaps they could report to plan and zoning when they observe a missing sign. And then Roxanne could begin the process to contact the land or remind them of their obligation to install it. And I think then the question becomes next is, well, okay, how much time is appropriate to give the landowner to install the sign before planning zoning would proceed to do it uh themselves and then bill? I'm sorry.
Assess back.
It'd be an assessment, and it'd be an assessment, right? So the the question, I guess, is, is that, does that sound reasonable to have highway and the sheriff's office be the eyes and ears out there reporting these? And then what's an appropriate timeframe to give the landowner to become into compliance? That's, I think, those are the issues.
What's your thoughts? What's, I mean, I think they're very valuable and they need to be there. Um, and I think highway and and uh sheriff's department can probably supply us the information, but then it gets to the point of how much time and how much staff and what else we're gonna do. Is that something? I don't know if that's something we can decide right here and right now.
Recommendations?
Uh, well, I just will point out that the the ordinance does state they have thirty days to replace it. Um, so once the letter is sent, there's thirty days for them, but at day thirty-one are we, do you want staff out there replacing it and assessing the cost?
I mean, you, if there's a large amount, you don't have the staff to do it, right?
Right, I mean, if we get, you know, one, two, three, a few in, you know,
Yeah.
here and there, a- and I I'm guessing that'll, that's what will be the case, is it will be uh as situations arise, it's notice that there's missing signs versus a, hey, I just drove down here, down this street and I noticed that there's ten signs missing, um have at it, but um.
Mister Chair, Roxanne, are are you okay with how the ordinance reads today? I mean, it's a twenty-two-year-old ordinance, so I mean, is is there other, any other changes that need to happen?
I think that's sufficient time to to notify them. Um, I I would say as long as there's no objection from the board that we begin that process of um putting that sign together and getting out there and 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 putting that up as immediately after that thirty days. Um, that would give me a little more uh ability to to just continue moving forward versus continue, I I mean, I know with code enforcement, it can drag out and drag out because somebody says they're they're going to do it, they're going to do it, I just need to do it next week, oh, I'm not home this time, oh, I got vacation next week. If we just get out there and do it after day thirty.
Mister Chair, actually be, it'd be after day thirty-five because we've had this happen to us in the past about mailing and when they get their mail and everything and then they call and pretty soon it's only ten more days before they can do it, you know, so we've gotta take some consideration of how quickly the mail moves too, though.
Sure.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm okay with that. I just don't know how the sheriff's department is gonna be able to uh let us know.
Maybe that's a conversation we'll have to have with them in the future.
It seems like, you know, that's the best solution we have at the moment, cause obviously they're out on the road all the time, so it's highways, so those are our eyes.
Eyes and ears of the county.
Consistently, right?
I think Monte was basically asking if we're okay with, or Scott was with with the twenty-two-year-old ordinance. And Roxanne's question was, yeah. So I think we're good.
Do you need additional action, Mister Chair?
I don't think so.
Enforce the ordinance?
Just.
Enforce the ordinance.
Yeah, just consensus and force the ordinance.
With some due respect on time, you know.
Yep, yep, we just need to be notified. So um if I can just say it up to both um the sheriff's office and highway, just let us know. Let us know so we can begin that process.
Okay.
Alright, I've taken up and out of your time.
Alright, thank you.
Chris Byrd.
Alright. It's good to see another department head up here for a long time, so. Alright, so my item on the agenda is to ward a construction contract uh for this project SP zero zero five zero nine zero dash zero zero four. This is the trail project in the city of Rice, affectionately known the Fox Meadows Trail. If you recall, there was a federal grant, they received federal transportation alternatives, a grant for this project. Uh, and then city of Rice was to come up with the local match and anything above what the grant amount was. We had a bid opening through our online bidding uh process last Friday at ten AM. Uh, we did receive three bids, although one of those bids uh was redirected uh due to some missing information. These are the two bids that were accepted um from J R Furchy Incorporated and Hellman Construction. Uh, the lowest responsible bidder was two, was J R Furchy Incorporated at two hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and four dollars and sixty cents. This is significantly above the engineer's estimate. Uh, the engineer's estimate was one hundred and ninety-five thousand uh and some change. So that was it, what what once, uh, that was an immediate concern uh for me was, is Rice prepared? So that was, well, once, that was an immediate concern for me was, is Rice prepared to come up with an additional local match? And I'm saying this was discussed at length at their city council meeting last night, and I got word late yesterday and this morning that they're okay with moving forward with it. So with that being said, my recommendation, and I had a sample resolution in your packet, but, so here's what that resolution would read, would read with all the numbers in there. My engineer's recommendation is to award a construction contract to JR Furchy Incorporated in the amount of two hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred four dollars and sixty cents. We are the, yeah, since it's a federal grant, we'll hold the contract. The city will have their city engineer, Stantec, perform all the construction inspection and any materials testing. Documentation, they will notify us monthly of the recommendation for monthly pay estimates, which we'll pay to the contractor. Then we will seek reimbursement from the federal grant process and then seek reimbursement from the City of Rice for anything above the grant amount.
Mister Chair, Chris, are you able to speak at all to the fifty, almost sixty thousand dollars in addition to the engineer's estimate?
Why that, was?
Was there any big surprise there?
Yeah, just maybe in general that it's higher than what their engineer was predicting, so. I do have that. This is, this is, if you recall, this project had, it changed engineers midstream, so we had their engineer prepare their plans and prepare the engineer's estimate, so that was the engineer's estimate was nine hundred one hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars. So all the bids came in at over two hundred thousand dollars for that, so.
Chris, so I was at the city council meeting last night, and they want the project to go on, and then they're, they were the assumption that there was a lower bid, but it didn't meet the technicalities of some, some of the stuff.
Yeah, so.
Can you get to that point a little bit, why?
Yeah, so we rejected one of the bids because of there was an addendum that was issued. And part of the bidding instructions is to certify that you did receive that bid and acknowledge that you understand what that addendum read. And so that's a certification form that, that bidders have to print off, sign and complete, and then upload as part of the online bidding documents. So that, that form, it's actually a form two twenty-one, two one one two six D is the form number, and the other two bidders completed that form correctly, and so we did reject the one bid.
Because I understand that bid was lower and they were.
It was, it was lower by about seventy-seven hundred dollars.
And they were, you know, they're on the hook for more money than anticipated and.
Correct.
Couple of the council members were concerned about that.
Yeah, my concern is with the federal process, it's not just my eyes and your eyes on it. We, we, we could be subject, it's potential for a federal audit, that's always a possibility, federal highways could audit it and make sure that, that's why we administer this and not the small cities. Because there's an agreement between the state of Minnesota and federal highways that they say all eighty-seven counties are adequately staffed with experience and knowledge to administer federal grant projects. So that was, that was a concern that I had, that if we were subject to a federal audit from federal highways and they say, why were you awarding contracts to bidders that didn't follow bidding instructions? That could put all of our other federal funds at risk. And Benton County, for our own roads, has a lot of federal money coming up in the next, next five years. It's just, it comes back to, we're just trying to do our best to demonstrate that we are following the federal process, even if it's a technicality that we cross our Ts, dot our Is, and, and those that we contract with are, are doing that as well. So, so this is the form, this is the form of the contract that I'm recommending. I mean, yeah, we require them to put the, the total bid up there, sign it, acknowledge that they received the addendum, the date that they received it, and that it was considered as part of their bid. That's part of, a big reason why we have them do this, is that they received the, the addendum and they're signing and certifying that they had considered anything that that addendum says as part of their bid. So furthermore, if you sign that you, if you're incorporated, what's the name of your corporation, you sign it with your business address. So it's just a required form. This actually, this, this form number is a state-approved, federal highways-approved form, that's why it's required in these, these federal projects.
Mister Chair, Chris, is this form only filled out when you're preparing to award the contract, or is it?
No, it's required of all bidders at the time that they submit their bid.
And that, that form was missing on the, low bidder?
Well, the form was submitted, it was just incomplete.
What was incomplete on it?
All right, I can bring that up.
This document is very, and all great.
Sorry, Jared, you cut out.
This document that Chris is talking about is, is very common and all.
Yeah, so this is the form, what's required here is, you know, fill out the addendum, the date that you received it highlighted, you know, by you signing it, you're saying that you had considered that addendum as part of your bid. Also, you're required to put in the proposal date, the date that you're submitting it, and then sign it. And then the name of your company here, as you're signing it, has to match, there's also a cover sheet that we require. That name of your company has to match what you put on the front cover of your sheet, and I'll bring that up, so we do require the, the front sheet of the proposal to be signed too. So once again, this is the other, the other bidder, but however you fill this out on the front here has to mar, match what you would put here, and those do not match, so. What we understand in is what was signed on the front page of the proposal was Rice Contracting and Developmental Services Inc. Incorporated. So. I would say if all the bids received had similar information missing, then I would say it was probably a failure on our part, and we did something wrong or could do something better in the future. But at the time of opening the bids, I did have two other bidders that completed this form. And therefore felt with the federal process and the possible scrutiny from a federal audit that it would not be recommended to accept this, this bid.
Mister Chair, Chris, are all these forms are available online when they're gonna prepare their bid package?
Correct, it's part of the bidding proposal that they, they download, so.
Mister Chair, Chris, will we, will we be entering into a contract then with Rice, City of Rice?
So we already have a contract with the City of Rice. That was something that's been on the books for a while.
Even, even for the difference of the amount?
Well, the contract, I thought I had that in here, did I put that in the wrong folder? The administration, administrative agreement that we have with the City of Rice says that they will fund all the costs above the grant amount.
And I assume that's what they had discussion about last night at their council meeting?
Right.
That's, that's the grant award letter, says, so they're getting one hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars. So the difference between the two is about ninety-three thousand, well, it's actually ninety-three thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty cents.
That the City of Rice has.
City has to write, or the City of Rice has to come up. The city engineer, it's appointed by the council, works for Stantec, him and I had some, we had lengthy discussions over the last two days. There was a consideration, maybe, okay, since they, all the bids came in above the engineer's estimate, is it warranted to just reject all of them and then re-advertise the, the project under different circumstances? The reality of that is, though, if we go through the re-advertising process, that project will not happen this year. Most likely, it'll have to be a next spring and summer project. But then do we open up the timeframe that we still go ahead and bid the project this fall, but then give contractors and bidders all summer to construct the project? Would that result in lower bid prices? Maybe, but then inflationary costs over another year of construction, is that gonna eat up any, any savings?
So Mister Chair, you, you were there, and Chris had conversations with Rice's position, they want us to pay another ninety-seven thousand?
Well, they agreed to it last night, not on a unanimous vote, but it looks like they want the project done. And I thought, I thought their, their engineer explained it quite well. He probably pushed pretty hard in, your bid might be higher, and that seemed to scare.
If they go back.
If they went back out, yeah. Truthfully, from what we see, the earlier you bid these projects, the better bids you get, and when you bid late in the season like this, you get a higher demand, you know, higher cost.
Well, then maybe to their benefit, they should wait and bid early next year.
We can't tell them what their benefits should be.
No, but I'm trying to find out what Rice wants to do here.
Well, they approved it.
They approved for that difference.
And they approved for that difference.
It's, it's a huge difference, so.
It's a lot of money on.
Yeah, so I just brought up the.
I mean, but we are the final contract holder too.
Yeah, it just says, yeah, this is our administrative agreement that we signed with the City of Rice, this dates back to a couple of years, I mean, this goes back to twenty twenty-two.
And I understand there'd be no, there would be no loss of grant if, if, you know, if it went out for a rebid, right?
Would, say that again?
Grant money would not go away.
No, we, we have met the, the requirements of project development that, that in the statewide transportation improvement plan, the project shows up as a, a twenty twenty-four project, so we meet those requirements, the, the federal funds have been authorized for this project, so. We, we would just have to notify them that we're going to re-let the project and, and we shouldn't lose any of the grant money or anything like that at this point.
Mister Chair, hypothetically, Chris, choose to, I mean, I don't wanna use the word overrule, but not put it out this year and put it out next spring, what does that mean for you or for the county? If you were to rebid this?
Well, I mean, either way, we have administrative costs to it, and, and that wasn't part of this agreement. The city's not on the hook for any of the administrative costs. No, not, yeah, that didn't make it into this agreement, so.
So that was one thing that I, I asked him last night, I said, so what is, what is the county getting out of this? And they did not know, and I said, well, I don't think we work for free.
Yeah, because after this agreement came about, there was discussions at any future agreements that, yeah, we would put some recuperation of administrative costs.
So back to that question, is it, is it an extreme additional amount of work for you if we were to go back and rebid it? Or because everything's in place, it's kind of a redo?
Well, yeah, I guess some additional work, I don't know if it's significant or not, I, I mean, the work just gets shifted from this fall to, to next year then. So as far as paying, creating pay vouchers to contractors and things like that. I do think that if we are gonna rebid it, some due diligence on an engineering side would be to look at this engineer's estimate and see, were those reasonable estimates? Do we need to adjust the engineer's estimate to reflect, you know, the current bidding environment or the current prices of materials and, and things like that, so.
Did you have any discussion with the, with the engineer from Rice that, because I know they've switched in between you? Do you get, do you get any feeling that he thought the bid was low from their previous engineer to what he would have thought?
No, I didn't get that, that question wasn't asked of them. Where is it? But you, you're right, you pointed out, so the project started being developed with, with one consultant. And then before this was finalized, the city went with this new consultant. So kind of due to the profession and license, so this, this consultant, they're the ones that signed the plans and came up with the the estimates. The current consultant didn't feel comfortable unless they had designed that project to put together the estimate. So there really wasn't anything, we kind of felt like, well, this is the, what that engineer came up with, this is our quote-unquote engineer's estimate. So instead of going back through the plans again, which would be a consultant fee to the city and revising that, they didn't do that. Now that we, if we're considering rejecting the bids, i- is it warranted to maybe have this new consultant look at the the items in the contract, or in the construction plans and put a reasonable estimated cost together for that? And then re, re-advertise the project with that engineer's estimate, so.
Yes, Jared?
Yeah, I look at it this way, if the City of Rice has already moved approval and we've got more time, I mean, it's gonna cost the county more time to redo all of this stuff, and e- even if it's just a, a little bit of staff time. I, I don't know, I, I think if, if they moved approval, maybe, maybe we should just move forward with it. What is, what are you guys' thoughts?
Mister Chair, I, I have to agree with Commissioner Gopinski. You know, I'm just surprised the city, you know, is willing to fork over that ninety thousand dollars extra.
I did not speak either way last night because it wasn't my place. Yeah, I was guess, I was surprised that they moved forward with, considered how much more money it was on a, you know, that's not a large project, but the percentage is pretty much.
Yeah.
There that says.
Yeah, the engineer and I, as we discussed it, we wish we could give better guidance, but the current market, it's a bituminous trail, so that's a thing. Another year after the election, what are oil prices gonna do, that could, that could factor into it. What are labor prices gonna be, you know, seven months from now, eight months now? But typically, yeah, we would like to advertise and bid projects in the fall or winter when contractors are looking for, for work. But are we gonna gain any savings that could be offset by inflationary costs, so?
You know, Mister Chair, Commissioner Gopinski is correct, we're just gonna keep adding more expense on our end for this, that we're not getting back from the City of Rice.
Your wishes?
Commissioner Johnson, you're thinking heavily.
I am thinking, I, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Gopinski, the Rice City Council did move three to two to move it forward, I just I really don't wanna be in a position where I'm telling them they don't know what they're doing here, but.
I don't know if it's worth it, I'll just acknowledge it, I, I, true, the bidders are present in the audience today, I don't know if that helps with your decision or not, but yeah, so I guess we got two bidders just anxiously waiting to hear, so.
Choice, Mister Chair.
Can we let somebody speak?
That's your choice.
That's yours, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, you can.
All I wanted to say is that using the Quest bidding platform, which is what this was run through, all addendums are acknowledged electronically. That's why I didn't even book to write it on a piece of paper. Because, I mean, I have two different forms that are part of that website that acknowledge, you can't even submit a bid if you don't acknowledge the addendum. Is what it boils down to. So that paperwork is somewhat of an archaic way of doing it when you're going through electronic bidding. I mean, I admit I didn't write it on there, but it's all electronically verified, so.
Would that hold?
The state or the county government sees that, I mean, that certification on it, so.
Would that hold water if we got audited?
I don't know.
Mister, may I ask Chris a question?
Sure.
So, so they obviously, the, the city applied for a TAP grant through, through MND. And that application had a certain specifications as to what they planned to build. So I was sort of wondering, do they have any options to do any design changes to bring down a cost? Or are they instead bound by what they submitted? In other words, that's, they said, okay, this is what we're gonna build, so now they're compelled to build based upon that current design?
I think within reason, they could do, make some adjustments. Big things that feds are picky about is your terminus, the beginning point and the ending point. You can't change that by, by a certain percentage. But within those limits, if they wanna do something different to reduce the cost, I think that, that is in.
And that, would that issue come up last night at the meeting? Is there any discussion about any design changes that might reduce costs? I would imagine since it's federally funded, that, that's gonna dictate, for example, trail width.
That's right.
It's gotta be eighty-eight, accessible slopes have to be right, you know.
In the grand scheme of things, it's kind of a small project, there's not a lot of things that can be removed or, it is, yes, the minimum like ten-foot trail and
Ten-foot, right, yeah.
Kind of grading it to, to match the beginning and end points.
You know, I, I think, when you go way back to the discussion, when we had, I think it was when Public Health, who was. Public Health, who was the director. Jenny, we discussed about when they when they applied for this or were looking at it. Where it ended up that maybe someday we could get that trail to go all the way down to the Benton Beach Park.
Oh, yeah.
I know that was, that was discussed way back when.
Sure, yeah.
And that was kinda.
Part of the park, city's park plan, yeah.
I guess what your wishes?
Chris, can you blow up the lowest bidder, please?
You wanna go back to the, I'll go to the, this is the bid summary.
Make a motion.
Uh are you not able to see on the screen or do you wanna just? I am sorry, uh why is it not sharing? I thought it was it.
Rox- Roxanna's left off.
I apologize for those uh participating at home following along on their bingo cards, so. Here's a summary of bids, um. This would be the resolution that would be adopted, um just acknowledging that we received. Bids from these two uh contractors and that we would. Lower to award to J R Furchie is the lowest responsible bid received, if that's that's the direction.
And Chris?
Correct, yes.
Hypothetically, what what was the other bidder's number?
Oh, well, here, we have that, cause it's on the the form. So it would be two hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents, so. It is a difference of about seventy-seven hundred dollars, so.
Thanks, Chris.
Motion toward uh the contract to J R Fitchy Incorporated contingent upon approval from the. Mindot Office of Civil Rights.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Here are no other discussion, wanna call the roll?
Sure, Commissioner Schlongen.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinan.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Alright, we will move forward with getting all the documents. Prepared for that, so.
Um I know this wasn't on the agenda, but if you allow me just a couple of minutes for an update, I was asked to to. Speak to this issue regarding the Highway twenty-three Coalition and the possibility of the Coalition. Receiving some funds, so to speak, um. Uh Highway twenty-three Coalition contracts with a consultant Bolton and Mink, um uh the individual Ashley is her name. And what I understand, I had a conversation with her recently, is that through the federal earmark process. Coalitions can apply for funds, they just can't receive them. The Highway twenty-three Coalition is requesting uh three million dollars for a study between Foley and Mora. Um a feasibility study or preferred alignment study, whatever you wanna call it. The good news is, I guess, for the Coalition is that it has made it on Senator Klobuchar's shortlist, is what I'm being told. It still has to go through congressional committees to be approved. Now, the problem is, since the Coalition can't receive it, a local agency needs to be the lead agency. Also sometimes referred to as the fiscal agent, um to receive those funds. There's also a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar local match. I guess that was part of the request. Um that if the senator could come up with three hundred, three uh. What did I say? Did I say three million? It's, it is three million. Okay, for this grant application, it's three million. There's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar local match. Uh where's that local match gonna come from? That's still unknown. There is a hope maybe that if successful, uh maybe Mindot, the district office could. Um District Three, Mindot District Three could help with it, with some state trunk highway funds, but nothing's guaranteed. So that's something that I guess the Coalition is looking for is a, probably a county uh to be. Eh eh I think in this case, it probably has to be a county, be that lead agency or fiscal agent to to receive that. What that would involve, like from a staff perspective, is that then you would have to go out and do an RFP process. To select a consultant to actually do this this study. And then you have a staff person that's managing that consultant, uh part of, you know, any project management team meetings. Reviewing invoices, paying the invoices to consultant, providing recommendations, coordinating between the consultant and Mindot. Coordinating between the consultant and the other counties, um those kinda things. It starts becoming um an administrative thing. Uh not too dissimilar from what we just discussed with the Rice Trail Project when we, when these federal funds come in.
Chris, do we get, would we get reimbursed for all of that?
That that's eh, I think that's something that we would probably wanna vet out through the Coalition itself. Does the Coalition have some funds through their their financing or their accounting to reimburse? For these kinda administrative costs, so, um.
And then with the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I mean. I'll just say it. If Benton County has to fork over that, I'm sorry. You know, I I'm not in favor of it then. I mean, it's if it's gonna be a coalition, it's gotta be a joint powers board or a grant system.
Sure.
That we all share.
I think the Coalition's very, very much aware that Benton County wouldn't wanna be on the hook for the seven hundred and fifty grand. Chris, um even if hypothetically Mindot was able to help fund that, there's still gonna need to be a fiscal agent, right?
Correct, yeah.
So, okay, so if it's okay with the board, how about I'll have a discussion at our next Highway twenty-three Coalition meeting about reimbursement? For potential fiscal agent administrative costs. They do use, like you said, use uh Bolton and Mink with Ashley. Um I would certainly think the Coalition could get some estimates on what that potentially would cost to do that. Um I know the Coalition has extended conversations in regards to this corridor. And which fiscal agent would make the most sense. Kinabik, Malax are not in a position. From that viewpoint, barring a dollar issue, Benton's in the best position to help, but. We don't want Benton County on the hook either.
We don't want Benton County on the hook, yeah.
Yeah, a- and I'll just be honest, I am kinda concerned too about our capacity just managing uh another consultant, um. That does require a lot of, you know, meetings and correspondence, um reviewing of plans and drafts of reports and 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 things like that.
But I think maybe the Coalition should be the heavy lifter on organizing that.
Sure.
If we can somehow minimize our ability to be the fiscal agent and not have to deal with all those side things.
That that'd be good. Once again, it's not just a Benton County project. If it was a trunk highway solely within Benton County, it's a different story, but. When you look at the mileage wise, we probably got the smallest chunk of mileage um that this would be affecting. So, yeah, I would certainly like to see some support from.
Yes, go ahead, Jared.
Hey, Commissioner Johnson, uh did did Kanabeck or Malax come to the table on and and actually get on this Coalition now? I know that the they were, uh Commissioner Persky was trying to get somebody from those counties on.
So Commissioner Reynolds has joined the Coalition from Malax County. Uh Commissioner Holland did not refile from Kinabik, so that position will be open and I'm assuming. That discussion will have to continue with their board to see if they're gonna replace her, um either with the new commissioner or one of the other ones that are there.
Okay, that's the, that's kinda the frustrating part is they've got the biggest uh. The biggest amount of mileage between Malax and and Kanabeck and. It's been kind of a tough goal trying to get them on board on this. And I think it's because they're afraid that it's gonna cost them a lot of money.
Right, and like I said, Commissioner Reynolds is on board now. She'll just, she'll be starting up with the Coalition from Malax, so.
One, one way, if you look at, you know, we can, we, I mean, I agree that we don't have the money to to do that. The other part is if we get involved and, you know, the upgrades were just done, what, two years ago out here from here to Malax? And what are we looking at, ten fifteen years for the life of that?
Yeah, yeah.
And at some point, if we're pretty good to the Coalition, maybe future boards will look at it and say, well, Benton County did the lift on this. Let's get that a four lane from here to Malacca or here to one sixty-nine.
Well, and I think the Coalition also looks at, you know, the things that are going on now from Malacca to Bach and. Bach to Ogilvy and the roundabouts in Malacca. The uh realignment of sixty-five and twenty-three. So, you know, the Coalition's trying to get in front of this with Mindot. You know, because if they continue to do all that work, the harder and harder it's gonna be for a realignment or a four lane. And potentially, the the railroad right of way runs the whole length. You know, I think there's some concern about the Coalition. Counties can step in with planning and zoning and help, you know, if people are gonna be building buildings on this right of way, it's gonna be a considerable cost in the future.
Sure. So that's one grant. There's another one that's coming up, well. If you remember our recent experience with congressional delegated spending or earmarks, how that process takes. So we were in a similar situation, you know, a year or so ago, we heard that we're on the shortlist. We didn't final get. Final approval until it was the spring uh of this year, so I feel that's a little bit farther down the road. But more immediate is, um Commissioner Persky approached me too about this and said there was another funding source where there's a lot of money out there. From the feds for planning, and so I talked to Ashley about that and and what she understands was. That he was referring to uh the Safe Streets for All grant application submitted. Which typically, that program, as us engineers understood, wasn't originally designed for these long corridors like that. It was more for coming up with plans um of agencies, how to address safety on their roads more in in general. Implement um planning grants is what they called it. A- a- and they don't typically li- end up leading to recommendations for expansion to four lanes. However, this program, due to the IIJA, has so much money that nobody's applying for. I guess federal highways is kinda softening their tone, or USDOT maybe I should say, it's softening their tone and trying to get more. Applicants to this program. That would need the same thing. It would need a fiscal agent, a lead agency to sign on to that grant application. And there would have to be a resolution adopted, a- and one of the statements in that resolution is that, um. If whether it's Benton County, Malax County, Kinabik County, um. Will uh has a plan in place for the local match for that. That application is due August twenty-ninth, so that's a little bit more immediate. If the Coalition is wanting somebody from this part of the Highway twenty-three to apply for that. Action needs to be considered next month for that. Uh so. Maybe on a more positive note, our state legislature, not in twenty-four, but in twenty-three, had obligated uh quite a bit of money. For local match specifically for IIJA dollars, so there's the possibility that then we, that's another application. Process, another grant application to the state to cover the local match for that. But that's, that's in the order of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollar request for what what was being recommended from this Ashley to apply for. In the, in the short term. So, um maybe more discussion in the future, um. But, um, yeah, that that those are two sources I know of from them. It's requiring somebody to step up to the plate and say, hey, we're we're willing to take on, you know, this project, this risk, the administrative burden. Uh a- and things like that, so.
Lot of, lot of unanswered answered questions.
Thank you, Chris.
Alright, I will step aside.
Alright. Christine.
Um as you recall, in January, there was a resolution brought before you for the absentee ballot board, um and it was approved. Since then, the Secretary of State has provided a new model of the absentee ballot board resolution. Before we need a new one signed, so I request approval on the new resolution. The on- the only thing that changed in that is that one word went from may to must. So if you're looking for the difference, that is it.
Move for approval in a second.
Let's spend maiden a second to approve the absentee ballot. Any other discussion? Hearing none?
Commissioner Schlongen.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinan. Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Uh then we'll move into the DMV update. Uh currently, we're fully staffed with three full-time technicians. And our two deputy auditors are also past DMV staff, so they're able to jump in whenever staff is gone. Or if there's an influx in the hallway. Uh right now, we're completing about a hundred and fifty transactions per day, about eighty tabs and titles. Twenty driver's license and twenty DNR transactions per day. And we provide uh services to seven, five dealerships and two banks that send titles in for us. To complete. If our sales continue as they currently are, we should clear two hundred and forty thousand this year. So that's a good.
Clear two forty?
Yeah, that's what the county is making.
Thank you.
Did we pick up some more dealers?
I'm working on it. It's not, it's difficult at times.
Difficult to do, right?
And then.
Just hard.
Yeah, it is. My other update is the tax forfeiture update. Uh currently, we have twenty-six parcels in our land inventory. The total amount of land is less than forty acres. The amount of tax due on those properties is around twenty-two thousand dollars. And the estimated market value of all of them is three hundred and sixteen thousand, so we don't have a very. Sought after tax forfeit list. Um uh pretty much all of the parcels are either landlocked, small wedges, old railway. Or just too small to do anything with. One property that we currently have is on Little Rock Lake, however, that parcel has a structure that encroaches fifteen feet. Onto another property and it ha- also has unapproved living quarters in it. So we're working with Land Services and Michelle to try to figure out what to do with that one, um. We do plan on having an online auction in the future sometime around elections. Um but on the update on the Tyler versus Hennepin, um tax forfeit. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that.
Very familiar with it.
Very familiar, okay. So currently, we had, there's six thousand parcels statewide included in that class action settlement. Benton County has three. Those previous owners could go to the claims administrator and request payment from the state. The state um had put forth a hundred and nine million to pay back the property owners who submit a claim. Um going forward, twenty-two of our cur- our inventoried properties fall into the timeframe of the settlement. We need to make a, what they call a good faith effort in selling those properties. And should any of those twenty-two sell before June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. Seventy-five percent of those sales need to be provided back to Minnesota management and budget. Um if there's any sell between the twenty twenty-seven and June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. Eighty-five percent of the sales needs to go back to MMB. And by December of each year, we need to provide a report to MMB showing a list of the remaining parcels. From the settlement period and what our good faith efforts have been. Um I just spoke with Derek Hodge yesterday from Hennepin County who has kind of headed all this. And he's hoping that since it's a presidential election year, that the state will give us some grace on getting those auctions. Kind of pushed off for this year.
And Christine, you said there's a total of thirty, is that what you?
A total of twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Question, uh uh Mister, uh Christine, I know in the past is, um. The Audit Treasurer's Office would bring uh description, photos, one of those parcels to the board. For the board to set a minimum uh price, uh ha- had that already been done a long time ago or does that still need to be done? Or or does it not necessary anymore for the board to set the minimum price?
It still needs to be set, um a minimum bid of an appraised value. Not necessarily the estimated market value.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. So at some point you'll, at some point you'll have a, you'll have a list for the board to consider for setting minimums. Okay, thank you. Michelle?
If I could just interject, sorry. Uh but there is a new law that was passed um that does state that the minimum bid will be the estimated market value going forward. So I just want to make you aware of that change.
Oh, okay. So then, this sounds like then the board will not be then asked to set a minimum then.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think as 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 Christine pointed out, a lot, I know our experience in the past is these are usually unsellable, unbuildable. Little s- little parcels that, yeah, don't have a lot of value, so no wonder they're tax forfeited.
I think the.
And I I apologize, I just want to correct the 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 min- the value that's supposed to be sold on is the estimated market value. The minimum bid is actually the costs and everything that we've incurred. So if I understand it correctly, we have to sell it first at that estimated market value. And then if we can't get it sold within thirty days, then we go down to that minimum bid, which is to recoup all of our costs.
So then the board does need to set a minimum bid then, sounds like.
It has to be the costs associated with it. So we'll just need to make sure that it's all the costs that the county has incurred.
Okay.
Well, that makes it easier for us to set a little bit.
If you need some clarification, the MICA group is really versed on it. They really know what's going on. You might want to contact them.
Okay.
I'm sure they'll help you out.
Yeah.
So it sounds like for us, cost is mostly gonna be staff time.
Right.
And simply managing disposal of, as I, in most instances, we haven't been like maintaining, you know, mowing or what have you, these parcels, so it's mostly just staff time.
If I could just add, um I did happen to watch the presentation that I think Micah may have put on. So by definition, the minimum bid means the sum of delinquent taxes, special assessments, penalties, interest and cost assigned to the parcel. And when they were discussing that, they talked about advertising, staff time, um work required to repair or um keep up the property. So that's kind of how they defined it and encouraged us to make sure that we document all that.
Okay. Thank you for the DMV update also. Appreciate that.
Mr. Meeting Updates?
Let's just, Ms. Chair, if you would.
Public Health?
Yeah, could we do that first?
We'll recess the board meeting and turn it over to Mr. Heinan for Public Health.
We'll call over the Benton County Community Health Board. Roll call.
Commissioner Schlangen? Commissioner Heinan?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Okay, approve or amend the agenda? Anything to add to the agenda? Jaclyn?
No additions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Now to call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh consent agenda, item one, what would you like to do with that?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Now to call the question, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion, oops, sorry, roll call.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Thank you for that expression, Beth. Three, Jaclyn.
All right, well, good morning.
Good morning.
Today we have Mariah with us. She's gonna do an overview for us this morning on the School Safety Demonstration Project Collaboration with Pleasant View Elementary School. I'm just gonna pull up PowerPoint here and um can you see this online or do I need to share differently? Let's see. I'll let you, I'll let you be the driver there, Wendy.
Oh, that's scary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you fly it to Jared?
Thank you.
It's like, I get a phone that's going this way. All right.
Perfect.
Good to go.
Thank you. All right, good morning, board. So I'm here to talk about the Sock Rapids Rice uh Safe Routes to School project. I'm sorry. All right, so I just wanted to give an introduction to Safe Routes to School and what it is. So the Minnesota Safe Routes to School vision is that youth in Minnesota can safely, confidently and conveniently walk, bike and roll to school and just in daily life. And Safe Routes to School programs improve safety, reduce traffic, and then improve air quality in your schools through a um six E's multidisciplinary approach. So I'll quickly just cover what the six E's are and then we'll move on to the actual demonstration project. So the six E's approach, um we do some evaluation through Safe Routes to School work. So what that is, is we look at traffic data. We survey parents, we survey students, we work with other um organizations to evaluate how walking and biking is in the community. And then we also offer education to the community. So what that looks like is um some bike rodeos. So if you're familiar with like the Rice Bike Rodeo or Folded Bike Rodeo, that's the kind of education that we do, just to increase awareness of bike and traffic um and pedestrian safety skills in students, parents and just the general community. And then we also provide encouragement to students and families. Um and that could look like Walk to School Day, which Foley oftentimes um is involved in that event as well. So that just encourages walking and rewards participation and tries to spark interest in parents and students um to get them walking and biking more. And then equity, just making sure equity is at the forefront of all of the Safe Routes to School work, making sure that all um different demographic groups benefit from Safe Routes to School initiatives. Um with especially putting interest on lower income um students and families, those from um students of color and then others that also face significant disparities. And then engagement, we want to make sure we have meaningful engagement with family, um families and children and just school staff, other community partners. So what that could look like is just going out to different events, um hearing from the community, making sure that we're taking their feedback into consideration with all of this work. And then last but not least is engineering. So those are the infrastructure improvements, um trails, sidewalks, um completing streets, just making sure that those are in place to uh make it easier to walk and bike. So how does public health fit into this initiative with Safe Routes to School? So actually through our SHIP grant, which is the statewide health improvement partnership grant, um it supports community-driven solutions for healthy eating, commercial tobacco-free living, well-being, and then in this case, um active living. So Safe Routes to School fits into that active living or active transportation sector. And then the goal of SHIP is to prevent chronic diseases and diseases among Minnesotans, so cancer, type-two diabetes, heart disease, among many others. Um so really ultimately, the goal of SHIP is to make the healthy choice the easy choice, which in this case, try to make walking and biking easier. And then just some benefits of walking and biking and why we do this work and why it's so important. Um it increases students' overall physical activity, which in turn um helps them with weight and blood pressure control, bone, muscle and joint health and maintenance, reduces their risk of diabetes, and then just improved mental health. And then there have been studies too that show that physical activity has many benefits on the students and their academic performance, cognition, and then can actually reduce behavior problems as well, which is, which is a huge benefit. So we really encourage walking and biking before the school day, after the school day, making kids prepared to arrive at school and learn. So the Sock Rapids Rice um School District Safe Routes to School project and that funding. So I don't want to take any credit for applying because the St. Cloud Area Planning Organization or APO did that applying um for a MINDOT grant, the Safe Routes to School Planning Assistance Grant. So they did a lot of the heavy lifting um and work with that. And that award amount was thirty-five thousand that um throughout the solicitation year was twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, that they were awarded that, and then their project year was twenty-twenty-three into twenty-twenty-four. So the goal of that Safe Routes to School Planning Assistance Grant is to help communities or schools create a comprehensive Safe Routes to School plan. All right, so the project itself, uh MINDOT had assigned Alta Planning and Design, which which is the consulting firm to complete a comprehensive Safe Routes to School plan for three different sites within Sock Rapids. Those sites are Pleasant View Elementary, Mississippi Heights Elementary, and then Sock Rapids Rice Middle School. So that work started in the fall of twenty-twenty-three and the Safe Routes to School Committee was formed, and that included St. Cloud APO staff, City of Sock Rapids staff, the School District staff, and then Benton County Public Health staff. So what the timeline kind of looked like, like I said, an intro call was completed in the fall and September where Alta Planning and Design um met with the St. Cloud APO just to talk about what the planning process looked like and what the overview of the next year would look like. Then finally, all different partners were engaged in October at a kickoff meeting to talk about high-level goals. And then really, we um went into the engagement and data collection period in November um and December. And what that looked like is I'll explain a couple of things on how we collected data from the Sock Rapids community to make sure that their voice was heard throughout all of this process. So they had an interactive website, which was a one-stop shop that included surveys, um maps, and then just more information about the project itself. And then there was an interactive map um where residents could go and put a sticky note on the map and define some issues or barriers to walking and biking um at a specific location. And then there was a caregiver survey that was given to families just to identify different walking and biking um barriers within Sock Rapids. And then the um Safe Routes to School Committee also had a pop-up table at the Sock Rapids Fire Department Open House. Um there was a lot of engagement throughout that event. So what that event included was just a plot map where individuals could come up and mark different locations where there were barrier barriers and opportunities for safer walking and biking. And then we asked about demographic questions within a survey as well. And then the last um engagement opportunity and data collection opportunity was we did an equity scorecard, so looking at demographic data within the Sock Rapids neighborhoods, I mean identifying which ones had the biggest health inequities. And then after that took place in November and December, then Alta Planning and Design, which was the consulting firm, they came up with a summary doc- document of issues and opportunities. And then the Safe Routes to School Committee met again in March um to talk about where could we do a demonstration project after identifying all of these different sites that had barriers to walking and biking. Which brings me to, so this is the plan itself, and I can share the plan um after today's meeting with you. It's not published online yet, but the final document is complete. Um but in the document itself is an infrastructures opportunities section for each of the site locations. So for Mississippi Heights, Pleasant View and the Middle School. So you can see on the left-hand side, there are different locations where there are recommendations of what could be completed there, so whether it's a sidewalk or um like some curb extensions. And then on the right-hand side in the document, it lists what those um recommendations are, what the priority level is and why it's important and what those changes would impact. So then there were three proposed demonstration project locations, um and those are identified in the plan as well. So the first one was at Pleasant View with curb extensions at the intersection of Eleventh Street North and Sixth Avenue North. And what that is, is just a curb extension allows um pedestrians and bicyclists to be seen by motorists that are passing. And then the second proposed one was at Mississippi Heights at Fourth Street South, um putting curb extensions in at the crosswalk. And then the third proposed project was at Sock Rapids Middle School, so there's three lanes in front of their school. Um the proposed project was to curb, do a curb extension on the southbound lane just to make it more organized for pickup and drop-off time because the school identified that that was a need. It was very disorganized and students weren't using the proper uh crosswalks for that timeframe. Ultimately, after looking at the equity scorecard, um and, excuse me, having discussions with the Sock Rapids community, it was identified that the Sixth Avenue North and Eleventh Street North project at Pleasant View was the priority area. So now the fun part, um the demonstration project was completed in May. And I just wanted to share some pictures of the project overall. So on the left side, you can see the Safe Routes to School Committee members painting the curb extensions. And then the um committee also had the Pleasant View Elementary Student Council get involved. And the kids just thought it was the most fun to see the project being put into place and they were able to help out and it was a great time with them. And then um just to show another step of the project, so once the curb extensions were painted, then we have to put in and install the reflective tape and then place the bollards. And just a huge shout shout out to the City of Sock Rapids staff um for stopping by. They had to use their leaf blowers to dry off the spots um where the bollards would be placed because we were dealing with some rain that day. So they stopped by and were able to help us um complete the project. Without them, we wouldn't have been able to do that. And then the demonstration project is complete and we watched it be in use right after it was installed. Um what we really saw as we watched the drop or the pickup time and after-school time was drivers were very cautious of driving through, making sure they're looking for pedestrians and bicyclists. And then just some more pictures of buses and cars navigating through. This picture comparison, I think, is really cool, just the before and after. You can see how it just really um points out where those crosswalks are and making the pedestrians and bicyclists more visible. And then this is, some of the members were missing, some um Safe Routes to School Committee members here. The school staff we were missing with school in session, and with any collaborative work, it's always hard to find a date and time that works for everyone. But that's most of our members. Mr. Heinan also, we had the pleasure of having him stop by um and join us and help out, so we really appreciate that. And then just a huge shout out to the Sock Rapids Herald too and Tim for highlighting this initiative. It was a great um initiative to highlight. So next steps for this project, so work with the Safe Routes to School um Committee for Sock Rapids to implement the other proposed demonstration projects. And then work with the um committee to also apply for funding potentially, um so working with the city, the APO and whatnot to make the permanent infrastructure changes, and there are numerous um MINDOT Safe Routes to School grants out there. And then just continue educating the community on safe walking and biking um and making sure that's a priority in our community. Any questions at all?
Awesome, Mr. Chair, quickly if I couldn't run, so stupid question, what do you do with the bollards in the winter time?
So this project will run through, sorry, I didn't mention that. This project will run through the summer and they have a survey open with um it right now, just gathering feedback from the community on, is it working? What do you think of the project? Um so it'll run through the summer and then we take them off. So this demonstration project will not um be there after, like August, September.
But not, so not next spring automatically?
Nope, nope. So it's done after that timeframe and then what we would do is look for funding to make that a permanent, so the permanent bollards and.
Sure, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
I want to thank you, Mariah, for doing that. I can tell you even today it still works. That's a block and a half from my house. And there's a lot of kids, and in the traffic, a lot of traffic.
And again, I just don't want to take complete credit for it. It was collaborative work with the rest of the um entities that were involved, so just here to provide updates too.
Thank you, Mariah.
Yep, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Jaclyn, our new department employees. That sat through a very interesting meeting today.
That's great orientation, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce some new public health employees to the Community Health Board. So I'll call up Courtney Ferreira. She is our new public health nurse supervisor. So she started here with us. Um she'll be supervising our Healthy Families Unit. So we have two units in public health. Healthy Families, which is more the direct client services, more of the clinical-type services and programs of public health. And then we have a Healthy Communities Unit, which is more the population health, um health policy and all of the more um more high-level broad services. So she'll be taking over Healthy Families. Um and I'll let her introduce herself as well. We're, we're happy to have her here.
Yeah, thank you and good morning. I think it's still morning. Yeah, so like Jaclyn said, um I'm Courtney Ferreira, the new public health uh nurse supervisor. Um I am somewhat in the area, St. Joe is where um where I am from. Um I kind of have a little bit of background in a few different areas with um, I mean, some of the earlier stuff with private duty nursing, um some clinic work, um some home healthcare, and then actually most recently in public health. Um so yeah, I'm really excited to be here. I'll have a few different program areas, like she said, uh family home visiting, WIC, uh disease prevention and control. Um yeah, I'm super excited to be here for this opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you and welcome.
All right, and then we also have over here our new case aide, Sarah Midas. She's here just a little bit longer than Courtney, so she's no longer the newest person here. Um our case aide position's really a critical position in our public health department. It supports a lot of our intakes and referrals for our family home visiting services, our child and teen checkups program, our follow-along program, among other things. And I'll let Sarah take a moment to introduce herself as well, and we're also very glad to have her here too.
Hello and good morning.
Morning.
I've been here about eight weeks now, so. And I work with them, a lot of it was be the child and teen checkups, and I do a lot of the entering of the referrals. A lot of it was be the child and teen checkups, and I do a lot of the entering of the referrals, and I also do the follow-along program. So keep busy with that, and I enjoy working with all you guys. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Okay, Jaclyn, anything else in front of the board?
No, nothing else to add today.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll adjourn at eleven oh seven back over to the board chair.
Mr. Chair, your thoughts on moving into ditch authority?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Can we take, yeah?
Okay, we'll take a couple of minutes here. We're gonna move to ditch authority. Yep.
Order it and have a contractor do it. The big point is, the big is getting equipment to this location, although I was able to drive down the buffer strip area with our. Side by side all the way to this point.
And and is it also correct that there's still some? For lack of better words punch work that needs to be done on C D fourteen to finalize that contract, that contractor's not out of there yet.
Correct, they do need to come back and smooth out a lot of the spoil piles, although this location based on my inspection just yesterday. Uh, this is probably one of the better locations that I probably don't need them to come back on, so. We are, this is downstream of that area where we're relooking at for the the wetland, uh, removing that that plug, so.
How big is the depression where you see the little grass coming in there?
Uh, I don't know, it's a few feet wide, um.
It's a little bit deceiving because it almost looks flat from the air. Chris, you and I were both out there along with the landowner. It's more of a depression than what the picture shows.
Sure, I I can understand that.
You know, it's it's not deep, but it's way more than what that kinda shows.
But based on my observations yesterday, it it's not impassable. Or reverse that, it is very, very passable, I believe, so I don't know what we would do other than haul in dirt. Uh, to fill that in or take dirt from somewhere else to fill in that area, so.
Like it's gonna take one load or what's it gonna take?
I think it's pretty minimal fix, um, I agree with Chris, right now it's dry and you could probably get through there, if it's wet, can you get through there? And again, this was established. It was established.
I guess.
Mister Chair, I got a question, so are we fixing the whole road or are we just fixing that indentation?
But I do wanna be cautious that through this process and through the the neighboring landowner, we made the point that this is a private, private road. Um, we're not fixing it because it's a public road or anything like like that, um. And I think we kinda made some arguments too that, you know, uh. Since it's a private road, there is some landowner responsibility for for maintaining that as well.
Why don't the landowner just get out there with a when it's dry and?
I think in his opinion, because of disrepair caused it, and why should he?
It's a private road. Needs to get to that road. Yeah, I. My, my comment would be if he wants it repaired. Just get out there and take a few scoops of dirt and fix it.
Or dump a load of dirt down the other end and let him take care of it.
Well, yeah.
Cause I can see if we're gonna go in there with a a dump truck or something, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna create more ruts or anything now. Okay, I mean, from what I can see from this road, yeah, you can. You can go in there with your four wheeler, your side by side, but at that point in time. I wouldn't even wanna risk going to dump truck or something dumping dirt down in there. Of knowing of getting stuck and then we've got ruts and now we're liable for all of that.
Or do you, well, he Montgomery was evidently using that for equipment passing, right?
Yeah, I'm I'm assuming so at one time, so I don't know how. I've heard from other areas that Sam tried to work this and wasn't very successful because it was just so wet for all those years and then even Bob. The previous owners before Mark Rekka Anderson had difficulty doing it, so. I do have some other photographs, I don't have them on the screen now.
Mr. Kapinski, go ahead.
Uh, my two cents here is I think it's an easy fix, even if even if the ditch authority did approve these uh, the specs. My concern is is what what kind of can of worms are we opening up with other things like people saying, oh, you damaged this corner of my field? And now I need to bring it back to 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 where it was a hundred years ago, that's my concern.
I I think, I think to answer that a little bit, my only thought process on it was is this was a. If you remember the whole discussion, this was a proven road to us, you know, in that big picture, I I. It went through all the processes and it was a a road that was approved, it wasn't something that somebody just kinda threw in and called it good.
Chris, do you have any idea what the cost would be to fix that?
I really don't, it's gonna be eh getting access to it, thi- this, you can see the fence lines. Kinda here, and these are the two owners, landlords that don't get along, so how do we, I don't know foresee this. Landowner granting access for us to get to it, how far, this is kinda landlocked, I wonder if I could bring up, uh, I should bring up beacon.
Yes, that would be helpful.
It is landlocked, we'd still have to get permission from another landowner to get to it unless we go the whole length of the ditch, which, um.
Is the landowner, the current landowner just scared to go in and do it because it was ditch authority or is it? Or just somebody else can do it, I don't have to do it.
So this is what it looked like before we did our repair, so you see all this water and this this culvert was either collapsed or plugged or both. And so this is the depression you're seeing in the air now.
I imagine it's just because there wasn't enough put on top and it just settled down and.
Oh, I, I, in my opinion, that's the route it chose to go through.
Right, but I mean after we did the repair.
Oh, sure.
It just wasn't enough put on top to to make it hold.
Well, it was kind of out of the repair, I, it's probably out of the buffer area, isn't it?
I would, I would say it's probably, yeah.
But it's probably out.
So. And this culvert, I mean, through the reestablishment drainage records process and the repair report progress process. This is a uh, forty eight inch diameter culvert now, so, which was bigger than even what. Uh, Mister Montgomery had put in there in two thousand, so. I feel confident that we've opened things up with our project and, um. That's not to say in, I don't know, we've had kind of a wet year already and. It's it's drier than it was last year when we were in a drought condition, so. A- as your ditch inspector, I I I'm struggling to justify that there's more that the drainage authority needs to to do this location. Couple that with the fact that we have disputing landowners and we've publicly made statements that we're not gonna do anything until boundary lines disputes are settled and those kinda things. And we're kinda in this this area, so. I guess my recommendation is not to do anything at this time, but, um.
I guess that it gets down to the simple question is is, do does ditch authority think that the disrepair of the ditch? Causes to run that way and cut through the private road? And if they do, what do they wanna do about it, if they don't feel that was the problem? And the current repair takes care of things, then you have your answer, it seems pretty straightforward to me.
I think the current repair is good, my personal thing on this is that. Because the water was cutting through there before. There, it has settled out, it's got its, you know, course, and I don't think if it's a private road for somebody to get back there and he wants that little. Impression fixed, haul load of dirt in there and fix it yourself. Right?
I agree with you on that.
I mean, if we do this one, we're gonna have another one.
Commissioner Kapinski's right, we're opening ourselves up.
I think the fact that we've made commitments that we are going to maintain this ditch, I do know that this flow line of this pipe is. I don't know exactly, but just being out there and standing on site, this pipe is deeper than this depression. So if we do what we've obligated ourselves to do is maintain this and don't let it get into disrepair. This water should stay below this area and I think that's what happened, this had been silted in and so the water, this was be- this became the low point. For the water to go around, so.
Mister Chair, I would say in the future, if that happens, yes, then it's on us, but this was prior.
Well, and I I, again, I'm just gonna reiterate from the landowner that that's the problem, because of the disrepair, this is what happened to us.
Yeah, yeah, well.
But they did fill it in, come, you know, if you look at the previous photo, they filled it in and.
What do you mean they filled it in?
Well, when they did the ditch, they must have filled that.
Well, they covered the culvert.
Like, they, no, but the other one was where it went, cut through the ditch before we brought the culvert back in.
No, not necessarily, I believe that there was enough sediment in this ditch that it was probably at a similar elevation to this meadow here. Um, and so then that was, so then this depression here was the low point at that then.
Why the water took that? Through his road.
Private road.
Through his private road.
Through his private road.
But I mean, yeah, this, these aerials are from, yeah, twenty twenty three, um. I mean, it was all wet there, so you could see where the channel was supposed to be, but. I think that at that time, the bottom of this and the bottom of that were at similar elevation, now we've. Removed the sediment here, so now the bottom of this is deeper and lower than this area, so.
Water should stay out, the question is, do you repair it? Anything else, Commissioner Kapinski?
Nope, I'm good.
So as our consensus, we're leaving it, I don't know that we need action on it.
No, no, okay, was it part of the repair plan, I think, yeah, just landowners requesting us to discuss it if they suppose so.
We discussed it and.
Consensus is you're leaving it alone?
Yeah, that's my consensus. Leave it alone and and he has every opportunity to go put some in on a private road.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, move on to C D thirteen fifteen buffer payments.
Okay, so these C D fifteen, thirteen and fifteen, um, were repaired in a seven, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen timeframe. Um, bef- prior to that, they went through the redetermination of benefits process, just like we did in these current ditches. We became aware, I guess my department became aware through an email correspondence this spring. That landowners didn't receive their buffer strip payments, um, although the assessment amount included. Um, what that costs were for buffer payments to the to the system, um. Interestingly enough, on both of those ditches, there's a handful of landowners that have changed hands, there's new owners than what there was at the time of the redetermination. Of benefits, so, so Christine, uh, myself and Michelle, we looked into this issue and, you know. First of all. Verified that, yeah, no buffer strip payments were to be made, or is it just somebody thinking that they should have got one and didn't and. We wrote to confirm, no, we couldn't find any vouchers or checks that were written, so. We know buffer strip payments still need to be paid. Um, I guess now, the landowner is uh, requesting interest to be paid on that since we did not pay that immediately back then. And then it brings up the question, I believe, the question, is there any obligation, um, to those landowners at the time? Or is it simply we just pay the landowner who owns it n- now, so. At the end of the day, though, there's about forty thousand dollars worth of buffer strip payments on ditch fif- thirteen. And then ditch fifteen has about sixty thousand, so there is about to the ditch. Accounts as a whole, about a hundred thousand dollars worth of obligation still, and and that's just at what the viewers awarded damages back in. I think, uh, yeah, fifteen or sixteen is when that was completed, it was a year or so before the actual repair process, so.
So two questions, um, where does the money come from if we choose to pay that out?
Well, I can answer that, it would come from the ditch account, so it would come from the ditch thirteen uh, fund or the ditch fifteen fund.
But is, there's no funds there?
Well, Mister Chair, it's like, it's like the repair costs is that you cash reserves of the county have been fronting. These repair costs and then as assessments come in, those assessments repay the internal borrowing that has occurred. That's that's where it comes from.
Aren't you having to raise the assessment? Aren't you having to raise the assessments then to cover the, cover the buffer?
I thought he, Chris just said the assessments included the damage payments.
Yeah, so that value, so, so when it came time to certify the assessments, the total assessment amount certified. Included the cost of actually excavation, the engineering costs, the viewers' costs and the the buffer strip costs.
And how much do we have out in assessments yet, do we know that?
Ditch thirteen, I believe there's fifteen thousand remaining. Yeah, fifteen thousand on ditch thirteen and. Twenty nine thousand on ditch fifteen.
So we're way short of cash.
So again, Mister Chair, we're relying upon our our countywide cash, in other words, you know, all our different funds have cash balances. So in essence, we're tapping into that idle cash to front these costs. That's where it comes from, you know, in other words, your general revenue fund has cash, human services fund has cash, ARPA. You know, all those different funds, restricted funds, those all have cash, so in essence, we're borrowing from those funds to do this work and then you again, you're. Recovering that later when you collect the assessments.
Hey, but my point is, she just said that the leftover assessments are only forty five thousand plus or minus.
Then I, I, again, that maybe that challenges the notion that that the, um. The the damages were included, but I I'm hearing Chris said that they were.
Christine, we've still left to collect.
Yes, you're right.
So we evidently collected some money already that included buffer strip payments. Right, and that would, that would explain it then, most likely then the answer is yes, and we've collected.
Commissioner Kapinski, sorry, I heard you try to get in.
Uh, i- i- I know obviously Christine wasn't here back in two thousand eighteen, just like we weren't here. Uh, but I look at it and go, where did this money go if? If we collected it and we were supposed to pay for these buffer strips? Now we kinda, we got forty thousand dollars left to collect and we're sixty grand in the hole. Or in the ditch, we call it.
Well, but we should have collected it in my book because it was. I think Commissioner Pop's correct. Somewhere, where the money went, I don't know.
At the end of the day, though, us discussing it as a staff, we we think that, well, we just need to pay them, we need to get the buffer strip payments out. And it's just a matter of, um, our office will generate the voucher like we would any other vendor.
So, to to address the question, so where's where's the money?
Where's the money?
Well, there's two possibilities, and I I'll verify with Jackie, it's either still sitting in the ditch fund accounts. Or it's been used to repay loans from the general revenue fund, cause that's kinda how it works is. You do all this work and it's all done, you this loan from the general revenue fund to the ditch fund to to cover. You know, whatever your costs were, and then as assessments come in, those assessments repay the loan. So, uh, I don't know off the top of my head if we had had already established these loans, if we hadn't, then the money's just still sitting in the ditch fund fund balance. If we'd had established the loans, then it would been repaying, I think annually Jackie will transfer those resources. Back to the general refund to gradually repay those loans, I'll I'll ask Jackie and she can confirm. I'm sure there's a trail. It's all there, it wouldn't have disappeared. Dispel any notion.
No.
Okay.
And then we got the the deal of somewhat interest.
Well, and I think, um, with consultation with the attorney's office, they found that. There isn't any statutory obligation and there's even some case law that says that interest is not owed and there was a a case, I don't know if Michelle's still on the line, but. She cited. Wasn't it like eleven years, the timeframe between the redetermination of benefits was finalized to when they, that drainage authority actually. Issued payment, I mean, it was many years.
Correct. And I did consult with colleagues, um, I got two different opinions, because of course every attorney has their own opinion. Um, but we did, when I consulted with John Cole, he mentioned that, you know, interest. Isn't necessarily owed and if you did pay any interest, it should be minimal, um, and. I did, had already found the research that talked about, this isn't like a contract, we didn't. You know, breach a contract by not paying these damages out, um, and it's it's now for then, so. There are attorney general opinions that what we didn't do then, we do now and we just make it right. Um, so making those payments and in the past. When you've got a new drainage project, there is law that talks about where you just reduce the assessment. By the damages, so you don't actually have any transactions occurring, you don't pay out those damages, um. So that is slightly different than our situation here, but there is some support that this is different than a typical debt. Um, where we might owe interest for failure to pay.
So Michelle, um, did I hear you say that, let's just say we have a repair petition come in for thirteen and fifteen next year? And we move forward with that, can we take off the buffer payments that we owed Jane Doe?
Absolutely.
And apply them that way instead of having checks cut? Now?
Well, we only have to pay for the buffer strip once, once.
Right, but I'm saying, but we haven't done it, so can we apply that payment that we would have made to Jane Doe to the future?
I know that there was some concern about tracking whether or not those payments have been made, um, I know Christine had concerns with that. Just reducing the assessment amount, um, just for tracking purposes. So.
Be way cleaner to just cut the check.
Discuss that as well. And Mister Cole, and he had indicated that he understood that was an issue and it's better to have it tracked.
So I I'm foreseeing two questions here, number one, are we gonna pay it, and number two, is there gonna be interest on it, and number three, is it going? To the existing landowners, so there's three questions here.
And I think the direction that we as staff, uh, believe we should go is, yeah, pay it, no interest. Whoever is the owner of record as of today.
Comments, questions from ditch thirty?
I would, I I like pay it, existing landowners, but. Somewhere in there, we charge these people two percent. Interest if they didn't pay their assessment, so would two percent, I won't go above two percent, I won't go ex- any higher than what we. Paid out when we let them attach it to their taxes.
Mister Chair, do we know what the interest would be additional?
Well, Commissioner Pop's correct, when the assessment was certified, it was paid in full. Or over seven years at two percent interest.
Correct, okay.
On ditch thirteen, I believe it was around six thousand dollars if we paid the two percent. I didn't figure it out on ditch fifteen.
And just to add another, uh, year into this equation, I believe we didn't actually do the assessment until two thousand eighteen. So nothing was charged to these property owners, so we weren't getting any money yet to pay for those damages.
I mean, that's.
Twenty was when the assessment was put on the tax roll.
Twenty.
That's just my opinion on the, if we were gonna charge interest, do you think we should charge interest to be probably our first or should pay interest? Should be our first order of conversation.
Part of me says that's the right thing to do.
I know.
To fix it, to fix our error, our meaning the counties. Commissioner Kapinski, go ahead.
My, my, yeah, uh, if we're gonna pay interest, then I think it's gotta go to the original landowners because they're the ones who were out put it, not the new ones.
That's true.
And it went on the payroll in two thousand and twenty, so at that point in time, the interest would accord, would occur from two thousand twenty till today.
For ones that have balances.
For ones, right.
Most of them paid it before the assessment started.
So, so Mister Chair, questions then to Michelle, so if we make a payment to a prior landowner. Does that, do we consider then the obligation to be legally satisfied then if it's made to a prior landowner?
If we go that route and we consider prior landowners, then I would recommend, and this is based off of discussions I had, um, with other colleagues. I would recommend that we contact the current pri- a current owner as well as the prior owner, see if we can come to an agreement. On who that money should be paid back to, who should be paid, and who gets the interest. Uh, if they don't agree, then there is a process outlined in statute to just submit it to the court and let the court decide who gets that money. Cause that is an issue to consider as well.
I mean, that's my worry is that in other words, you pay it to a prior landowner, but current says, hey, I want that money, do they have a legitimate claim?
And vice versa.
Paying twice, right?
And there's all sorts of legal theories that we could argue, um, you know, so you guys can decide. To just do the current owners or for those where the property has changed ownership, there's, there were a couple of properties that might be questionable. Then we go back to the prior owner and the current owner, get an agreement. Who should get it and if they can't agree, then we give that to the court to decide.
How many, how many properties are we talking about, do we know?
For thirteen, I believe it was two that we had things to do, right?
So, one, Michelle, one follow up, so let's just say the board decides to pay current owner, does prior owner then still potentially have a claim?
You know, we're hoping, no, and I, this was where John Cole recommended just paying it to the pri- the current owner. A different colleague of mine thought we should go through this process of. Having the current owner and prior owner enter into an agreement who should get that money, the damages, and then if there was any interest, who should get that money?
So where do you land on this, where do you land on this one then?
I think if there are parcels that we have concerns over, which there are two on ditch thirteen, I think it's fine if we seek them out. To get an agreement and if we can't, putting it into the court's hands, then it will be free.
How many are on fifteen?
Uh, Chris, do you have that number?
Rough number?
It's quite a bit more. So, uh, I mean, we're like.
Landowners to agree on it.
No, I don't either, I, you're not gonna get previous and current landowners to agree, not all of them.
And for the interest piece, that may be more clear, um, we would have to look back at the date of transfer.
Yeah, that's true.
In light of what Michelle said, I I think we should pay the current landowners and do no interest, that no, we don't bring any, some of these issues up. And if the past landowners have an issue, then I guess they bring it at that point.
I will say, the the individual that has been contacting Christine and I, um, owned it then and and still owns it now, so. Nobody else has been making a claim that that they owed buffer strips, so.
Do they think they're owed interest?
I think.
Just this one does, well, her actual email stated that. After visiting with a few landowners of ditch thirteen, the question came up regarding. If we can assume our overdue reimbursements will include a seven percent interest rate accrued comparable to the fee. We would have been charged if we didn't pay it before the assessment. But the seven percent, from what I'm understanding, was what was talked about prior to the two percent being established.
So the two was actually assessed?
Yeah.
So this is my question. Did they pay their assessments in full right away or did they take it off of a a four or five year? Cause if they paid it in full, no, no interest.
But we're gonna, I mean, I agree, but we're gonna put some work on staff to try to figure all that out. I mean, Commissioner Kapinski brought up a point, pay the current landowners and be done.
Be done with it.
No interest.
I, I agree with that, I agree with that.
I do, what, I'd like to buy some land on that ditch and three years later I get a payment because, you know.
I I still, I'm okay with it, part of me just says the right thing to do is to pay some interest back, but whatever.
I'll pay the two percent, but I won't pay anymore, cause that's what we agreed to charge them, we had a lot of discussion on whether it was gonna be seven, five, two. We, you know, money was cheap at that time.
Yeah, cause I think that's part of the same discussion we had recently was like, what were investments earning at that time that? Like as Monty says, the general fund is missing out by having to front these costs, so that's kinda where that the number came from.
We weren't getting much on our money at that time, so that's why it was at two percent.
So what are you, what are you thinking?
Okay, let's just, I'll make a motion, we pay the current landowners. The benefited acres at a two percent. On their money from twenty twenty, is that what it was, should have been paid out? Assessed?
Yeah.
From twenty twenty.
A lot of them paid it in twenty nineteen.
Okay.
It's twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
For thirteen and fifteen?
For thirteen and fifteen. And if anybody comes forth, then Michelle's gonna have to take care of it. Good with that, Michelle?
Well, I I don't have a second yet, so. The motion is to pay the damages for ditch thirteen and fifteen.
The benefited acres. Thirteen and fifteen at a two percent.
At two percent. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second on it, any more discussion? Any other discussion?
Mister Chair, I will be voting it down because I don't think we, uh, need to pay for that interest.
Okay, any other discussion?
Mister Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
I, uh, I, I'm really struggling with this because honestly, I. I hear what Commissioner Heinen just said and and I agree, that's that's kinda the direction I'm leaning, but. We, we expect people to pay interest when we we, uh, assess them, so. It it's a catch twenty two, my scare is is, you know, we gotta, you know, if 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 these funds got paid to. Pay other, uh, uh, debt down, then we gotta come up with that additional money again, so.
We, our assessment would not have included interest owed back to property owners for damages. So there's gonna be a. Yeah, so.
Sorry, I didn't interrupt. We would have to reassess that cost then, so like in August where we have that big discussion. Essentially, it would get reassessed back to the, the drainage system, any money that was paid out for that interest.
So the landowners that have already paid their assessments are gonna get another assessment for interest that we're gonna pay for damages.
County screwed up.
Because the county screwed up. What a disaster. Commissioner Schlongen, did you have another comment?
So we're saying that if they paid interest, we have to pay that interest back?
No.
No.
To them?
No, no, no. We're saying that we missed the damage payment and therefore, since we paid it, or did not pay it, we wanna pay it plus interest. Because we didn't pay it. And they were charged two percent when they paid their assessments.
If.
Oh, I could say, they already paid the assessment.
Some of them.
Some of them.
But if they paid the assessments in full, then they didn't get charged interest, it's when they. Carried it over through a two, three, four, five year program.
Right, and in the interest motion, I mean, we're gonna have, staff's gonna have to figure out who paid and who didn't.
Don't, because we're gonna pay the buffer strips, no matter who paid it.
You're gonna give them two percent if they paid it.
So, so point of clarification, Mr. Chair, does the motion include? Not paying interest to those who paid their assessments in full, or is it just everyone gets?
Everybody gets two percent, because if you got your, if you would've got your interest payment, you could've took that money to the bank, you got two percent on it.
So everybody gets two percent if you paid early or not?
You could've got four percent or six.
Just for clarification, Commissioner Pop, then that means like Michelle's, ditch system's gonna have to get assessed for the interest that we're gonna pay.
That's right.
Correct, yeah.
The, the one.
Two percent and then losing two percent.
Yeah, we'll gain two percent, lose two percent.
But, and go through a lot of work.
The problem is, this is, this is where it gets complicated. Remember, the benefited area is larger than the buffer, so. Those that are getting a buffer payment are coming out ahead, but yeah, we're, we're incurring those costs on those that not next to the ditch. That don't have a buffer strip, it weren't owed one, they paid their assessment, um. Yeah.
So what's been done is done and the, the new owners will be doing their interest from where they're at, right?
If they don't have it paid for.
If they don't have.
I'm quite certain that when the property transferred, I bet that assessment had to be paid.
No, no, I actually didn't, not on the ones that are in question.
Okay.
So they hadn't paid anything towards it?
Oh, they had paid.
Had to make yearly payments.
Yeah, they had paid their.
Taxes.
Well.
I think, I think adding the two percent is gonna create a ton of work for staff. For relatively little gain for, for every landowner.
And then assess it back.
The ditch authority.
Yeah, it's gotta go against the ditch authority.
Sorry, we don't know if there's extra funds in that, in them bitches.
Highly doubt it.
They doubt it.
Eh, eh, okay, any more discussion on it? We have a motion second on the floor, so, any other discussion on it? All right, roll call please, Beth.
Sure, Commissioner Schlongen? Yep.
Your vote. Just doing roll call or are we doing it?
This is the vote.
Voting on your second mo- of the motion.
Is it I or name?
I, I'm gonna go name.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Heinen? Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion fails, um, so. We need a new motion to move something forward if we're gonna do this with this again. I'm, I'm gonna move that we, that we uh pay the buffer damages uh to the existing landowners. And I think that's the only.
No interest.
No interest.
I'll second that one.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, eh, uh, Commissioner Pop, you were, you were a hundred percent right on, it, it is fair to pay, but. Just going, that's the only reason I voted against it, is just the all of the work for two percent, and then it has to get assessed back. The taxpayers can end up paying to, to, to get this fixed, that's why I voted it down.
I, I agree, Commissioner Kapinski, a hundred percent.
And that was my rationale of it too, so.
All right.
Mr. Chair, oh, just to clarify, so we're going, the, we're gonna do the assessments to, to the current owners. On their taxes and then they'll be responsible for however that goes.
Okay, to clarify, so we're, we're gonna pay buffers, um, and there's not gonna be any additional assessment. For that buffer if there's no interest on it.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
Their assessments that are in place are, they're in place, nothing to do with it.
So they've already been assessed for the costs of the buffer strip payments. We just need to now pay the buffer strips.
Maybe to help Commissioner Schlongen, so when I think this ditch was clean, we had to take some of their land to create the, the wide enough buffer. So they get damages for that loss of their land, that's what this is all about, yeah, yep.
Any other discussion, is motion second, pay the damages, no interest to the current landowners?
Thirteen and fifteen.
Ditch thirteen and fifteen. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call please, Beth.
Sure, Commissioner Schlongen?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Got some direction, thank you.
Yes, we will get working on that.
This up, appreciate your time and effort in it. Anything else, Chris, on ditches?
Uh, no, not for today.
Okay, ditch authority is adjourned eleven fifty-three, or Chair, Commissioner Pop?
We were at Commissioner meeting updates.
Meeting of the whole and forget the.
Anybody got anything that's really important and?
No.
No, we should set any committee of the holes to set.
I only had like ten meetings last week.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Monty, any committee of the holes?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Cory's gonna start setting up, so thank you for letting us do that, get us, get going. So, Mr. Chair, of course, you know, the AMC policy committee meetings are September eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth at Alexandria, Arrowood. Uh, I believe Beth has been approaching you all about attendance and uh hotel registrations, et cetera. If not, please connect with Beth.
If, if I can clarify, I did make reservations for everybody, so just let me know if I need to cancel or make any changes. But I have you all registered for the, the um fall policy conference and the hotel reservations so far.
Did you, did you do Wednesday?
Yes, it is. Yes, yes, and it automatically popped up for it.
Back to her and let her know if our.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Cory, if you're here, she can go ahead and start setting up. Uh, lastly, Mr. Chair, um, the Soil and Water Conservation District Fall Tour Practices. Um, the dates offered are, the preferred dates should be either September eighteenth. Or September twenty-fourth, September eighteenth. Or September twenty-fourth. Uh, the eighteenth is a Wednesday, the twenty-fourth is a Tuesday. And typically, that runs most of the day, so you start at about nine and you wrap up by mid-afternoon.
Well, first comment is, if one and or two people go to the fly-in, that's over the fly-in time on the eighteen.
You're right, exactly.
Fourth would probably be.
So shoot for twenty-fourth?
Yep.
It's okay, we're gonna circle this September twenty-fourth. And uh usually the, the start time is about eight thirty, the bus leaves at nine. From the Soil and Water Offices, okay, September twenty-fourth, Beth, on that, eight thirty AM, Soil and Water Offices, those are the two we have, Mr. Chair.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, it's gotta be by ro- by, by um, by roll call, please.
Sure, so what were the two dates again?
Uh, sure, for uh these, the Soil and Water Tour Practices, it'd be September twenty-fourth, Commissioner Schlongen at eight thirty AM.
I got that one, what was the other one?
The other one was the Fall, AMC Fall Policy Conference, that's September eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth up in Alexandria. Yep, eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth. Arrowood, Alexandria.
Okay.
Roll call?
Chair, Commissioner Schlongen?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Commissioner Kapinski, he is muted.
Nod your head.
You're muted, sir.
Looks like he's.
Just nod your head, Jared.
He's, looks like he's actually frozen.
Yeah, he's sleeping.
His image is frozen, right, yeah, okay, that's fine, he'll be no vote on this, no vote at all.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I.
Johnson, and then Commissioner Pop, okay.
Thanks. Okay, we're adjourned at eleven fifty-seven.